Yeah, we usually normally just take it. But in the minutes, it's just noted everyone that we have. There's summary minutes.
Oh, who's doing the summary minutes?
Who was present?
Who is doing the summary minutes? Is Bev doing the summary? I just want to check to see if Bev is, you're taking the summary minutes?
Don't think so.
Thank you. No, she's there. She is.
Oh, she is? Okay.
And in the Google Drive is the new application.
So are we taking role first or do you want us to?
In the summary minutes, it's just noted everyone who's here. We don't take role.
Okay. All right. Well, um, do you want me to get started?
Yeah, please.
Great. So, um, good morning, everyone. What a week. Um, good to be meeting folks in person and also to be moving forward on some things that we are planning forward. It feels like we can do that now. So we have a copy of the initial charter application that we have gone through a process of first debriefing how this last year went with all staff and all contractors that were involved as peer reviewers of the initial charter applications and then really looking to streamline cleanup and create a draft for this next year. I actually have asked the deputy director to take lead in this. So I am going to turn things over to Bridgette, who will walk us through the changes that we are proposing. And I know that she's got plenty to present. So Dr. Bridget Russell.
Just the mic, press the mic button?
Okay. All right.
So let me turn my camera on. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I'm going to try to be quick today. I have in the Google Drive provided for you, I have an overview document and I'm going to share my screen to show it to you now. And this overview document just outlines the big, the major changes. The major changes that we've made to the document. So the biggest change, the one big change, is that we moved the rubric from Part C written responses to Part A introduction and instructions. And this is, this is because when it was in Part C, which is the written responses, it, the same thing was repeated over and over and over and question after question after question. So we left the question specific points that applicants needed to answer in Part C, but we put the overall rubric in, in Part A. We thought that this might be easier for peer reviewers instead of like continually scrolling up on electronic. Okay, so that's, that's the one major change that we made. Minor changes, formatting, we, it's going to be cheaper to print. We took out the, the color saturated headers and, and we, we did line editings to just, to make the document more concise. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you a couple of changes that, that you might want to look at in detail. But most of it is just, is just line edits. And for each, so after, you know, the, the 2021 documents, the combined parts A through D were 81 pages and the 22 proposed drafts are only 62 pages. We are hoping that maybe the submitted applications, which were 349 and 370 pages this past year, when they submit them with the new forms, they won't maybe be quite that long. So you have.
Their application in a wheelbarrow.
They were, it was phenomenal. You know, we'd get these and they used to have to put them on CDs. And that's how we would, that's how we would have to read them, you know? It, it was just, you know, trying to go through it. It was, yeah. So thank you.
As those of us who have been teachers know, it is harder to write a shorter paper than a longer paper.
Yep.
Because you have to really distill everything down to.
What's necessary. Yeah.
So for each of the documents, Part A, B, C, and D, I have provided a draft with line edits and track changes and the version with changes accepted. So I'm going to show. That's not what I want. This is what I want. Okay, so for example, the type of change I made was this appendices and attachment part where you, you know, attach it if checked and with the file naming convention, this was in Part A and in Part C. So I left it in Part C and I just took it out of Part A.
Right.
And in Part A, instead, I just did this little bullet list of the attachments because it's already in Part C, things like that. The one thing that you might want to look at, I took out, I recommended removing this summary portion, which is on page seven. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought I was sharing screen. Okay, hang on a second. I'm gonna, I'm, yes, technical difficulties, so.
I think it would be best if we go through where all of the changes are by page, not just skip two pages. So, um, because, and I know some of them are just minor little edits, but I want commissioners to be clear as to what's being taken out of it, even if it's just a word, but we've seen it. So I think it would just be easier if we just, so if commissioners open up the Part A and it does have the, the line outs. And I don't, I don't think I've got page numbers online.
Really, it should. It should have a footer that says.
On the right, on the right tab, there's page numbers as you scroll.
Oh, gotcha.
But on the document itself, there's not.
Which is weird. I have page numbers on my document.
I don't. But on the right.
Yeah, you could see.
Yeah. No, no page.
So I'm, I'm sharing the document now.
Yeah.
And this is the footer that should be in that document.
Yeah.
So is that the, Commissioner Bert, did you say that's the footer that you see?
Yes.
Okay.
But I did, like, Glenna just opened up the same document in the Google Drive. Exact same one, same location, hers. It's just the formatting, I think, I guess, I don't know.
It's not a big deal because when you're scrolling, you can see the page number as you're scrolling, so.
Okay. All right. I wonder if.
I don't know. Nah.
Um, I could have, I knew how, but, you mean like that? Okay.
It says Part A.
Can you show me? Oh, sorry.
I'm on the draft Part A.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, go out, all the way.
What am I supposed, aren't I supposed to be on the draft Part A?
No, it's, it's, it's the red lines.
Mine has the line out.
Application draft, final version, draft red line.
Red line.
It's called 2022 draft red line.
Yes.
No, but we want the editing. They, I mean, they, they need to, okay.
You could still edit if you want the tools.
How do I undo what I did? Okay. I, I want, I want the, this review pane to show, so. Yeah, see, we, we need that. Oh, the, okay, now.
Yeah.
That's the one I had up.
But it didn't have the, it should have the numbers on it.
Nope.
It says 2022.
Yeah, that's the one I had up.
Red line.
Yeah, that's the, that's the file I opened up.
Do you want me to look real quick just to?
Sure, but I.
Yeah, you're probably, I mean.
Okay, go out a little.
Yep.
Out.
Oops, sorry.
Okay.
Gourmet doughnuts, Steve. These are good. Thank you.
You inspired me on, whatever.
See, that's the one I had opened up.
Yours is a different.
Yeah.
Yours is just different.
Yeah.
Like yours looks very different than ours.
Yeah, it does.
It must be because you're on the tablet.
Yeah.
Oh.
And I'm fine. I see the, it's just gonna, might take me a little while to get to something because I have a page.
But it's on this, I'm showing it.
Yeah, if we're going together, we're fine.
Right, and I'm showing it on the screen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it must be because you're on the tablet.
It must be. I don't know, but I don't know why it would change it.
Your whole screen looks very different than mine. Like you don't have any of the headings or anything that I have.
No, because I saw headings. I was like, I don't have that.
I do.
Did you go into the?
I did, three times. It is, it is. I just, mine just is formatted differently because it's the iPad and I'm fine. I've got everything I need. I don't have some of the pretty stuff.
So can we, are we ready to start on page two?
You know? Okay.
So on page two, um, my first cut was just a single word overview of the review process. And I've sort of taken out extraneous words here and there. I took out this paragraph on the bottom of page two because it says the PEC and CSD has determined that answers that score in the meets criteria are satisfactory. I think that's obvious.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's meets, it's meets. And this was just wordsmithing to make it, to make it shorter for the applicant team to clarify any weaknesses identified.
Right, so, and it is in, it is noted in the section that they have to respond if, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and this just, you know, conciseness and language cleanup in the bullets.
Right.
Same thing down here, just please contact Charter Schools Division. And I deleted, you know, I deleted things like in addition.
So the CSD has the ability.
Your mic's low.
Sorry.
I know. On page two, the CSD has the ability to review scores for uniformity. Is that still in here? Because I thought that was important to the director.
Where, where is that?
It's in a red line at the bottom of page two. It's right after the meets the criteria.
Yeah. Um, the CSD has the ability. Oh, okay. Um.
I thought, I thought, Karina, that you wanted to be able to standardize.
I would be.
Reviewing teams.
Yeah, I would be happy to keep that statement. We've talked about other means of training the peer reviewers earlier and working with them more to align expectations. But I think if we keep that statement, that, that's great. Thank you for catching that.
Okay, but here's, here's my only single question because I have no problem with keeping the concept, but it's been a little, it's been a little while since I completely looked through this.
Okay.
Couple days and then, you know, all that happened. So, um, I think I saw somewhere else in the application process, it delineated that the director does do that. I think in the section that it talks about the establishment of the peer reviewers or somewhere.
I believe it does.
Is it?
It does.
Is it not there?
It is.
So can we just double check to make sure it is there and then we can keep it out?
We only did one.
Pretty sure.
I wanted it.
Because that was one of the things that I had in my mind when I was going over it to make sure that was in there. So, and I, I was pretty sure I saw it.
Right.
When it was parsed out more about what the, how the peer review process is going to happen. I'm pretty sure it does say the director will whatever.
I, I believe it does, but if Ms. Barnes wants it here again.
No, I don't need it duplicated. I just need it out of limited.
Yeah, we just want to make sure. Karina, I think it's there in another part of the, we're just making sure because I, I think I saw it in the section that talks deeper about the peer review process. I think it is in there. We're just going to double check because that was something I, I wanted to keep track of to make sure it was in. Like I said, this is a little distant to me right now.
But if it's not in the other section and we keep this, keep this sentence, it should be added to the previous paragraph so we don't have a single sentence paragraph.
Yes.
Thank you. Ninth grade grammar.
Okay.
Don't start counting semi bullets.
This is just cleanup for conciseness, same thing, same thing. I, you might want this in. I thought, I thought it sort of goes without saying that it's obvious that just following the prompts does not guarantee approval. The very fact that there is an approval meeting and that there's a rubric.
Which?
It's this, this line right here. It says, it says, "Note, simply following the prompts does not guarantee approval by your selected authorizer." I, I thought that was obvious.
Well, unfortunately, it isn't with some applicants.
Okay.
You know, because let's be honest, we've heard people, so I answered that. You know, so it's, you know.
Okay.
I get what you're saying, but sometimes.
Sometimes being explicit is better than implicit.
True. Now, as you are editing that, shouldn't we be seeing it live in our Google Doc?
No, because I'm editing it in a Word document. It's, when, when I edit in Google, those are just copies in Google.
I see.
So.
Okay, thanks.
And this is just language cleanup. And this is the shortened list of appendices because the full list with naming convention is in Part C.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Now, you might want to put this back in because it's not obvious. I, I thought that the inclusion of these elements in the application and rubric makes clear their importance, but if you want to put this summary back in, I can do that.
Is that?
It's right at the bottom.
Yep. It's page seven.
Yep, thank you. Six on ours, yeah.
And there's a piece of me that would say, well, I'd be fine with taking it out if it was something that was incorporated into the training. The only problem is there isn't a requirement to attend the training. So it, it could be that, you know, a group didn't feel the need to do the training, so they wouldn't have gotten that information in that other format. So I think just that little bit of guidance, because I'm sure these are all things that Missy does include in the training. But like I said, if someone doesn't do the training, if they don't have to, they wouldn't get that guidance. So this is just a little reassurance.
Well, are these items embedded into someplace else? That they would, at least it would come across their eyeballs somewhere.
It's embedded throughout the application, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to keep it in.
Right.
I just, it was, it was just a question. Um.
I don't think we need it then. If it's somewhere, if these items are already embedded somewhere else.
They're embedded in the application.
Yeah.
But. But they're through, I mean, this, this is a shorter distillation of it. So I, I mean, I, I can, I can see the chair's point that I, it, it doesn't hurt to put it in. You know, what's one extra page in the application? It's long.
Yeah, and that, that last paragraph almost is speaking to other authorizers, which.
Right.
They don't have to use our application. So it's like, that may not be true.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Maybe we don't include this because, like, especially if it's just another page. Like, it's only, it's just another page. Just throw it in. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't really necessarily see the, I, I mean, our applicant teams, are they taking this page out and referring to it over and over again? Is this guiding their direction? Probably not, right? Like, it's just words. It's just words that we are putting out there, so.
It's a checklist.
But, but can I say that, that last bullet point on there, a school that demonstrates support and ownership of the school by the local community, not just the applicant team, goes to Glenna's point yesterday with our last school that applied and had no one there from the community in support. Like, if they would read these things in a summary format, they might go, okay, so we need to have people there. We need, you know, I, I don't know. I, I like it. I like it in there.
Yeah, it is in the application itself. They have to speak to community. You know, how, how is the school responsive to the community? So they do have to put it more in a narrative form in another part of the application.
I don't know. I, I.
I know, I get you.
One page is not, one extra page just has a summary.
I can also envision if someone challenged your decision that this would be a great page. I would use this page.
Okay, yeah, all right.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I kind of like it. It's the same clear, yes, they gave you notice.
I don't like the.
If they believe they need all these and we didn't approve, this is also a page for the opposite as well.
Yeah, it could go both ways, but I, again.
I did all these things.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Redundancy can be good.
All right.
Yeah, so we'll keep it. Except I, I'm still going to speak to that last paragraph there about authorizers want thoughtful, well-developed applications. We're not speaking for all authorizers. You know, this isn't a statewide, everyone uses this application. So I don't think.
That last paragraph should be removed.
That last paragraph should still be removed.
You don't.
But the other part.
I, I think that.
We could say the PEC wants. No, we should just say the PEC wants thoughtful.
It shouldn't be authorizers.
But it should be expects, not wants.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I, yeah. I support it being the PEC expects.
I like that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, if this was an application for everyone, that every authorizer used, but it's not, so.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. Okay, and so then we also should check and, and should just be, and negotiate a contract after receiving approval because it's, or if you want to add in the PEC, but it shouldn't be negotiate with their authorizer. Oh, wait a minute, hold on.
Prior to receiving.
No, we don't negotiate the contract prior to.
Right.
Receiving approval. Yes. Oh, to commence opera.
Prior to commencing operations.
Read the whole sentence? You know?
How about prior to commencing operations?
I know.
Yes.
No, well, it should be, yeah.
Yeah, commence should be commencing. Commencing.
To commence.
Yeah.
To commence.
Yeah, the verbs are all, need to match. No, prior to commencing.
Yes, prior to commencing.
No.
No, no, it's approval to commence operation. That's the, that's what we do. We give them approval to commence operation.
To commence, okay, to commence. Is she changing the authorizer to PEC?
No, she's, yeah, she already did.
Okay, great, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
It's fuzzy up there.
I don't think it should be commence. I think it should be commencing. I think you should leave it the way it's written.
Yeah, I think, I think the way it's written is fine. Just change authorizer.
Authorizer.
But dramatically, the beginning of that sentence where it's set, well, now that little thing is there, including required monthly meetings, completing a planning implementation year checklist. So not complete, but completing so that it's.
Actually, the whole thing is wrong because it says, including, well.
That sentence, actually.
Okay, applicants shall enter, including, well, complete and, and negotiate. But the, but the prior to commencing goes with the negotiate. So it is correct parallel structure. There, they shall enter into a planning, et cetera. They shall complete and they shall negotiate prior to commencing.
Well, but could you put a colon after shall?
Yeah, or even have one, two, and three, you know, I, two, and three I's for each one of those, maybe make it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes it cleaner.
Yeah, a list. Yeah.
Well, and then, Bridgette, it's the PEC that gives approval to commence operations. So I would leave the last part as it was written.
Oh, I know.
So we do 10 points.
Leave that whole thing the way it was.
Well, should be approval from the PEC to commence operations.
Yeah, prior to receiving. From the PEC.
From the PEC, yeah.
Change authorizer to PEC.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's one of those.
No, no, change just the word authorizer to PEC.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah. But I guess it's pretty expensive. I've never bought from him, just because I have all my high school.
Shall I move on to the next section? So instructions and timeframe. Some, the dates in this section are going to depend on the calendar that you approved today. So the, the dates over here, over here in red, these are just, you know, they were initial projections.
Okay, I'm sorry. I came here. Sorry.
There's a lot of things here. Is that better? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the, the deletion up here is just, I mean, it, it's obvious that these are dates, it's a timetable, so. Is, is this deletion okay?
Yeah.
And it, it says in the timetable that all applications have to be submitted between.
Right.
All right, and so this is just for conciseness and cleanup. This is just moved from down below because it's out of order time-wise because the technical assistance training happens before the charter applications are submitted. So nothing has changed in there. It was just deleted from down here. Um, and then this is just cleanup. So is June 1st at 5:00 PM Mountain Time. The rest of it is just extra words. I went to their website to see what this is actually called and took out the abbreviation. And then this is just for conciseness.
I have a question. Should there maybe a shall?
Pardon?
Should there maybe a shall on the charter applications maybe submitted? Or if they're going to submit, they've got to do it between those two dates, right?
Um, okay, so they may be submitted anytime between May 1st and June 1st. The deadline for submission is June 1st.
Okay, yeah, so you may, you may submit it.
As early as May 1st.
All right.
I don't know why there's a earlier, well, anyway. And then down here, it, it says, "All applicant teams must submit an electronic version." So I didn't see why it had to be said twice.
Right.
Um, and then down here, I, I just said, "Received applications" because I believe they're going to be electronic this year, so it doesn't need to be copies of.
So I, I just, we, this just has to be clear because there have been times when applicant teams have said, "We tried to submit it electronically and we could not." So we. So we made hard copies and dropped them off. So, you know, when, when it says all applicant teams must submit an electronic version, if there's a glitch and an applicant team drives up here and submits a hard copy by the deadline, it has to be accepted. Because they complied, they, they completed it, and it was through no fault of their own that they couldn't get the electronic version. You know, they had problems. There's been a, I know there was at least one time when PED server had a problem, and they just couldn't get it submitted. So I wanna, I don't know if it's clear there that, you know, I don't want an applicant team to say, well, gee, we, it said it had to be electronic. I want it to be electronic, but I also.
I guess my thing with electronic is, you know, we, with email, if they're not waiting until the last minute of the last hour of the last, you know, day to submit, then email even, I mean, all, all of us have the email. It would have to be like the whole state government email server would have to be down.
No, it's not. It's not. There have been, honestly, there have been cases where they just couldn't get it. Well, it wasn't the email, it was the PED server was down. So it's, we're on the state email. So the PED server was down, and they couldn't, they couldn't submit it. So I, I think in all fairness, and I can't speak for an applicant team, but they have until 5:00 that night. And I know it's, sometimes it's hard, but even if it's 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, and they're trying to do it, and or they can't do it because their server is down. You know, what happens if it's, you know, on the, on their side, but that's not their fault?
Yeah.
That it was, that it was down, and we tried to get to FedEx, and we just, it couldn't, so we've got a hard copy to you, I think.
I guess for me, that there's always an alternative possibility, like there's Gmail, Outlook. You know, whether it's like their own personal server, like it would have to be now in 2021 that the internet cell service would have to be down for them not to be able to access their cellphone to try to, you know, it's like multiple things would have to go wrong to not to be
To live where I live.
Yeah, you should live where I live too. That does happen.
I'm just saying.
But KT does live in the sticks. Well, not really the stick sticks, but he's down there in southeastern, right? So what, I understand his, KT's concern. And first off, it's, it's hard to have too much respect for people that wait till the last minute of the last day and the last hour. But what if there was a sentence saying, you know, the commission's recommendation is to, you know, transmit your, you know, your information early to avoid any possible disruptions, or whatever the language wants to be. But that our recommendation is that you don't wait until the evening of May 31st.
So for me, I think if I'm looking at the responsibility of a school leader in opening a new school, if I can't count on them to figure out a way to submit their application electronically, that's a big red flag for me. Like if they, if they cannot problem solve enough, go to a local library. I mean, there's so many ways. I mean, I don't think college professors give that much grace to college students that we're giving to charter leaders who are trying to open up, that are, that are asking for the privilege of leading a new school, leading children. So for me, I think it's, submit it electronically. Figure it out, get it done, submit it electronically.
And I'm fine, but I just need, because it's really for direction for missing, so that it's clear that if there's a problem and someone drives up here, or has someone get here and drop off an application printed because they couldn't do it electronically, that we're, that we're saying no to that applicant team. That's what needs to be clearly understood, so that the school, in the trainings, and, and somehow that's defined, that it's, you know, it, there, there's no, there's no alternative for whatever emergency you might have.
So put this.
I'm in agreement with Patty, and I've been in a position with San Juan College where my email has gone down, or their server has gone down. And at my house where CenturyLink was gone down, so not everybody has always access to the internet all the time. And delivering, I don't see what's wrong with that.
I just wanted to let the commissioners, excuse me, Commissioner Creo, I just wanted to let the commissioners know that during the trainings, I do ask them before June 1st to test, submit something electronically, to make sure there are no bugs, that I can see what they are submitting.
That is a great idea. But also, you know, these days, even something as simple as a job application on a resume, it's done electronically, period, period. They don't say, but if, you know, it's a bad day in your neighborhood. And because we all know that sometimes there are challenges with internet. And it's just, you know, if anybody's waiting to the very last second, that speaks to the applicant. Uh, I would just, my recommendation would be, it's electronic, and that's it. Because that's the way people apply for jobs now. It's the way people turn in papers to their professors now. That, that's just it. And then, you know, and if there is some sort of just monumental cataclysmic, you know, glitch with the internet, the PED and the P E C, we always reserve the right to say, we're having a problem, we're not gonna accept, we, and we're extending the deadline until June 5th.
No, we're not extending the deadline.
Then fine, we don't need to. I think the month time is fine. It's, you know, the deadline, the word deadline means deadline for, because it's a deadline. It's electronic only, that's my sense.
That's fine.
I agree, electronic only, but do they receive a confirmation that it's been received? Because that's the other thing, is they could send it in two or three days early, and then they're waiting, 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 and don't know, and they think it's here. They send it in early, but if they, if they, do they receive a, an electronic confirmation that it has been received? Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So.
It's a great point, David.
Do we want to put back in this first sentence, only electronic copies will be accepted, or?
It has to be clearly outlined that it is only electronic, so that they understand.
And maybe you can delete that second sentence then, Bridgette. Where, because it is redundant. It says the same thing two times in a row, so keep the first sentence, and then remove the second one.
Yeah.
Could, could we add, and C S D will confirm
Receive.
Receive. Well, confirm electronically, or confirm electronic receipt. Just, so they're assured that, if they don't get a confirmation, they need to contact.
Yeah. Just receipt confirmation will be sent.
Good.
And then that last sentence, you know, for any extraneous situations, they can always contact you.
Yeah. So why has the technical assistance workshops here?
It was moved up here because it takes place before they submit.
Gotcha, okay.
Because I just.
Yep.
Date order. So, um, I, I think the applications provided to the PED was a typo, and it should say to the P E C. And is it okay just to say all received applications will be, okay, thank you. Do you want to look at the dates when you do the calendar, or do you want to do the dates now?
I think, I think we can do the.
Or kill two birds with one stone.
Thing that need, that would need to be dropped, yeah, because it says the third week of August. It doesn't have a specific date for when we make the decision, and I think all of the other dates are not dependent on our meeting dates.
Right.
We do, you know, so I think we can certainly look at the dates now. Because generally what we've done is, the dates that have been created have always been created to accommodate whatever time, peer review and all of that. It's really irrelevant to us. It's just making sure that there's a sufficient amount of time for the review process. So, you know, as, as long as you all have had eyes on it, and you're comfortable with that timeframe. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um. So these, um. So should we keep the dates just for us internally, because they, that, that's not a deadline for them? Our, our, our review period is something we do internally. Same thing with the preliminary analysis. You do need
I think it's helpful, it would be helpful for the applicant to know when, when their application or how it's moving through the process.
Yeah.
Just because I know, you know, applying to a job, if you're applying for a professor, it's better to know when, where you're at in that process rather than guessing.
Yeah, so that I would know, you're right. I would know by the end of June that the analysis is done, and that because it says no fewer than four days prior to the capacity interview. I know that, because people have to also make their own arrangements, so they need to know that they're going to have to be available July 5th to the 8th for capacity interviews. So I think it's fair to the applicant team to give them enough notice, and then they also know that they should be hearing by around July 1ish what the analysis is, so that they're looking for it. In case somehow someone's missed it, they contact C S D and say, hey, I thought I was supposed to get this, and I didn't. So I, I think KT's right.
Okay, so, um. I think for this section, we need to work backward from the
Right.
The community input hearings. And on, on this draft calendar, it says July 11th, 12th, and 13th. But the dates I have here are July 18th to 22nd. If it's, if it's
That could be changed. Yeah, I mean, I think Glenna dropped those in just as a, you know.
Place, placeholder.
Yeah.
We can, we can shift all those dates that are highlighted on the calendar to the lower, to the week of the 18th.
That, that would be great.
Yep. Okay, so, okay. So it'll be July 18th to 22nd for the community input hearing. Capacity interviews will be July 11th to 15th. And, or sorry, the, the analysis is 11th through 15th, and the capacity interviews will be the 5th through the 8th.
Do we know that those are not weekend days right now? Those are all, oh, you've got that right there.
Yeah.
But then if we put the dates in right now, does this mean the next year, we just have to make that minor change?
We just have to update the dates.
Okay.
There's, there's a, a lot of little things that get updated from year to year, just, you know, the, the, the date on the document, that the title, that it's called. But. So, um, and then I had a question. It says, it said in last year's that the capacity interview will be held in Albuquerque. So are the capacity interviews going to be in person this year, or can they be virtual?
I'm assuming they're gonna be in person.
Okay.
But this is December, so, you know, but I, they should
Could you clarify what the capacity interview is? Like, what happens during the capacity interview?
So Commissioner, during the capacity interview, we have the applicant team meet with the peer reviewers with, to, to address a standardized set of questions plus some application-specific questions. And the goal is to determine, because somebody can hire a writer of an application, and that happens all the time. Maybe not New Mexico, but that happens. People hire someone to write the charter application, and so we want to see who the leaders of the school are, the founders of the school, and the capacity they have for implementing the school.
There's capacity July 11th.
And the questions are found in part D of the application.
Oh, I don't know. Bridgette, were you talking about the community input being in Albuquerque, or you talk about the capacity interview?
The capacity interview.
Oh, oh, that could be here. You can hold those anyplace you want.
Yeah.
Right, so should we just delete this line, the capacity interview will be held in Albuquerque? And that way it leaves our options open as to
I still don't even.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's not in mine.
That whole little table is not yours?
It is, but it doesn't say, the fact that the oh wait, it's in the, it's, it's in the, oh. Oh, yeah, it was in the, first table of, under capacity interview, not the second one.
So, and then to follow up on the calendar, we should reserve the week of July 11th, 15th then, for the capacity interviews.
No, we don't. It doesn't have to be on our calendar, because we don't have any part of that.
Oh, okay, perfect then.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's the peer, it's, it's the peer review team and someone from charter schools.
Super, thanks, yeah.
So, I mean, that's up to the peer review team and the charter school division, where they're held.
Right, I'd like to have the flexibility, if it's a Santa Fe or a northern New Mexico school, to do it here, yeah.
That's on you.
Okay.
Could, could I raise one thing, where, then, one of the things we're gonna talk about today is moving towards not necessarily having the commission to review these documents every year. And I wonder if you could, instead of saying specific days, say generally 10 days after this. I mean, I agree with what Commissioner Manis said that it's good to know, but I want, I really want us to get away from you having to look at this every time. I'm sure you will.
Okay, so make all, all dates, so non 2022 specific.
Right, so if we did, um.
I think one thing I would suggest in lieu of that as well, like do that on this, because I do agree, I think we shouldn't be, yeah. I would love to not change things every single year, but I do think an exact timeline for these charter applicants would be helpful. So like having a one, a one-pager, right, of like, these are the dates for 22, and those applicants then get that sheet. And that way it's specific to them, but it has nothing to do with like our
And, and we could just have that one-page 2022 calendar on the P E C's new application webpage.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, because we will have to talk about it.
Every time, yeah.
To look at our, you know, the scheduling. But yeah, so if we looked at, well, and, I mean, we'd certainly be, because statute is the June 1st. You know, that one's good. So if we looked at example, the substantive review period, we could put in approximately 20 days. Or, you know, yeah.
Or even just like the 24th day of June, or, you know.
No, we don't want to put, um, an exact date in this. It'll come in their calendar. But this is, this is hopefully gonna be embedded and not have to be changed every year.
Could, could we just say an external peer review team will read and analyze the applications in June? They're due June 1st, so if we just put in June.
Sure, and if we just put these, okay.
I mean, and the way it's written out, you know, no fewer than seven days prior, no fewer than four days prior, that pretty much, you know, sequences it. And all of this. And so I'll take all these red dates out. These, these were just, you know, our working dates. Yeah. And this one, yeah, the capacity interview, no fewer than seven days prior to, I don't know why this has to be underlined. Can I not? There's, there's a lot of, this is bold, this is italic, this is red, this is underlined, it's just. Yeah. No, that's fine, yeah.
This is just a stylistic preference. If you could, for the whole table, go to layout and make it to where the stuff is like moved to the top, instead of at bottom of the cells, it just
The whole community input hearing during July. And then we just leave that out.
Sorry.
That, that little square at the edge.
Yeah.
You go, if you click it down just a bit.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to get to it.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
On layout. At the top. Ribbons. Ribbon.
Oh, top justified rather than center justified?
Uh, just at the top ribbon, at the very top.
Okay.
On layout, uh, the other layout, sorry. Um, you should be able to select, I'd say left top. Should be good, and that'll just bring everything up, so it was weird, some were up, some were down. I think whenever I saw it.
Well, actually, some of that is because what I was trying to do is. Is left center justify it, it's, it's just because of all of the changes that, that the spacing looks off. In the final version of the table, it actually looks nice, but if you prefer it top justified instead of center, that's okay.
Okay.
So if we put on, with a public hearing to obtain community input. If we simply put the PEC will hold community input hearings during July.
So.
And just take out the red July 18th to 2022, but in the narrative there. The PEC will hold community input hearings.
You mean replace the whole thing with just the PEC will hold?
No, it's, that's already there. If, after the, the PEC will hold community input hearings in July to allow the community.
Right, okay. And do you want, as provided in the Charter School Act in here, it just dawns on me that, that's, I mean.
I don't know whether it's this, I mean, we're doing all this because of the Charter School Act, so I don't think we have to. Keep explaining why we're doing this.
And can we just put.
I asked myself.
Over, over here, can I just put community input hearings instead of public hearing to obtain?
Right.
And, um. Is this the right place for this? It just occurs to me because.
No, because I.
This is about community input.
If they're coming without. Knowing anything that's on them.
Right, because we've talked about that internally, that, that we don't wanna make the charter application process, you know, a paint by numbers kit. So that anyone can do it.
And we don't wanna insult them, it's like, of course I know that, you know, what do you, you know.
But honestly, it is a really great, like, item for us to see of like, oh, they didn't, that didn't, they didn't think of that? Like, that's not on the top of their brain to know their application, like, that, once again, we just want responsible leaders anyway, so.
Budget, you wanna look at the budget?
Exactly, right.
Thank you, Commissioner Burt, I think that was an approach that we took to this, that we don't need to be preachy and reminding and, um. Every little step that needs to be taken, like, cause that's part of assessing the capacity.
Yep, we are right, if they come unprepared. That's a, that's a big red flag.
And honestly, that's a great, honest picture of what that school will likely look like, not being handheld by CSD. And what they're gonna look like when they're on their own, so if we can figure that out before, that's better.
The only thing I would add is that it's a, a public input hearing to me is. Is the commissioners hearing from the public, so we at least ought to say they need to be ready to answer questions or something. Because if I went to a community input hearing. They might expect that they're just here, they're just there to listen to the community, but it sounds like it's much more of a, a back and forth.
Yeah.
So I would just say, and, and be ready to answer questions or something, and then you could take that.
So, and Julia, just know that we have training with the applicants every month. And we do extensive preparation for every step of the process.
Okay, then you can take that.
I think this.
Not required that you attend the training. I mean, it's certainly, if you don't attend the training, I get it, you're doomed, but it's not a requirement. So. I think it, it might be important to have that there, just in case some, you know, that's, that's my only thought. That if it was a requirement that they attended every training, then they got it.
I, I think, I think this highlighted sentence covers it, it says the PEC will use this opportunity to obtain information from the applicants. And then the second sentence is.
That's okay, that's enough.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, so this is just cleanup, um, this is just cleanup. And we can probably take out these dates are subject to change because this is gonna be in the calendar. Okay.
And, um, yeah, the PEC will hold a public decision-making meeting, um, prior to September 1. Cause we have to make our decision by September, on or before September 1.
It says here in the third week of August, would you rather just have it say, uh, before September 1st or by August 31st?
By August 31st? She's clicked, she's just double checking.
Before September.
Yeah, before September, I think it's on or before September 1, we have to make the decision. Is what the statute says, or it might say either by September 1 or on or before.
No later than September 1?
Yeah.
I apologize for my clumsy typing, I cut my finger and I have bandaged.
And it's those little tiny, like, paper cutting things that just.
And your fingertips is, that's where all your nerve endings are.
Yeah.
So all, all, all week I have been less efficient than I should be. So glossary of terms, um, there's not many changes in, oh whoopsies, I, another. Another spacing change.
So is there a, um. With partnership, it, was there a question whether that was the correct? Cause it's NMSA 22, AP4R is highlighted on mine, so it, was there a?
Was it?
Yeah, under partnership, it's highlighted on my copy, uh, right at the very end.
Okay, um, yeah, our, our contractor said, I shortened and slightly changed the wording here, cause we're not. Uh, she didn't quote directly, she just summarized, um, what's in statute.
Okay.
And, and I changed this, I, if an applicant doesn't know what a SMART goal is. I am sorry, um, so I just, i- instead of format, I just put SMART goals, mission-specific goals. Must be colon and then what the SMART acronym stands for. And down here, um, we tend to use, uh, the term English learner rather than English language learner, so. Um, and then that's it for the glossary, um, evaluation rubric, um, just. You know, conciseness, oh, um, you might wanna put these back in, um, I, I thought it was obvious. That if it's, if it's approaches the criteria, it's obvious that it does not clearly meet all criteria above, under, meets the criteria. But you might wanna keep that in.
I'm fine with taking it out. I think it's a no-brainer, yeah.
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 Um, same thing down here under, um, does not meet the criteria, that it doesn't. Oh, and one thing, when we get to the part D, capacity interview. We use does not meet the criteria in the application. But the three choices in the capacity interview questions are meets the criteria, approaches the criteria and falls far below. Do you wanna keep that? Um, we can talk about that when we get to part D, that was one of my suggested changes, you might wanna use the same criteria for both.
I think we need to be consistent with the wording throughout.
Okay, so there's no falls far below in part A. It's just when we get to, to, to part D, and I guess the change was made at some, and then throughout the document. I took the periods out after the headings because headings shouldn't have periods after them. And so this, this part, um. It, it's, it's a little different than the, that it doesn't have the, the rubric, actually have to go look at the original one now. Sorry. Oh no, this is what we put in, we put, we put the rubrics, you know, in here, so a complete response must. For, for all of the, um, all of the questions. So this, this is the, these, these rubric sections were in, um, part C and now they are in part A.
Right.
And I don't think there are any more changes.
Well, you added, yeah, under organizational, you added.
Where did I add? Oh, yes, um, the, the Black Education Act and.
No, governing body creation capacity, that is that, that green section was added, correct? It's on my copy, it's green.
Can you tell me what page?
It, I can't, cause I don't have pages on mine.
23, it's page 23 on mine.
Thank you.
I think it might be like a page before or after on your copy.
It's A, it's three organizational framework, A governing body creation capacity. On my copy, it's green, so I'm assuming that was added or moved.
I'm. Oh, no, that's just a formatting change, it had, it had this great big font and underlining and, yeah. Sorry, just formatting change.
All right.
A clarification question, so with, um, with the, uh, these rubrics. When assessing, is it like, or is there some times where, you know, maybe they meet for one thing. Within this particular section of the rubric, but they meet in other areas within that same section? Does that happen with applicants, like?
Yeah.
So is with, would you rate that if they like, maybe they identify all qualifications, but they don't describe how the board will ensure. Robust, so is there like, a way to, how would you rank them in that case? Because it seems like there's a lot that goes on within each of these sections.
There is, and this is, this is something we've talked about, um, with the performance framework, specific, especially. Because. For, there are a lot of bullets and in order to, to meet. The criteria here and in the performance framework, really, they have to, they have to meet every single sub-bullet. So. One, one issue with the, um, you know, the meets, approaches, does not meet is sort of, we have grades of A, B and F. There's not a C minus, there's not.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly.
And so, so yes, there is not a rub, and this is one of the things that we've talked about with the performance framework, how to, you know, how to rate schools that. Currently, they have to tick every box on every sub-indicator or you do not get a meets.
Right.
Um, and so someone who is, you know, missing one tiny little thing gets the same rating as someone who is. Kind of a mess.
Not very equitable.
Well, well, but what it is, is they meet 100%, they meet the majority, or they don't meet the majority. Cause that's what the, the, the glossary is saying, that does not meet, is when you do not at least achieve a majority. Of the criteria in that category.
Right.
So either, I mean, if you have somewhere between 51 and 99%, you're, you have approaches.
Right.
I guess for me, a one to five scale is better than a one to three.
I would agree with you, um, and.
It gets more confusing wh- when you get into that thing with the peer reviewers. That this gives it a very clear, you know, if someone says, well, I think it's a three, I think it's a four, you, you're starting to parse it out so much. Some sections may have 10 items, some sections may have three items, well, how do you rate something? If they get two out of three, how do you rate it differently? If there's only two items, how do you rate it, a, a, a two or a three or a four? I mean, I think just, they either have a majority, they have everything, or they don't have a majority.
Do the peer reviewers do norm setting? Cause I mean, I know, this is, it's not the same thing, but when I was a teacher and we would grade final exams. We would all look at, you know, the, like, all of the essays and then be like, okay, this is what a four is, this is what a three is, this is what a two is. And so do our peer reviewers kind of do that and decide, okay, you know, if, if they have this little tiny thing, it's still gonna be a meets. If it's these multiple things, it's gonna be a pro, like, do they do norm setting?
Becca, there, there is some of that and I think that there could be more. So we are building into the process more training for the peer reviewers. And more clarification on expectations.
And we used to have five. And it, you know, Commissioner Robbins has been here as long. It was really very confusing and through going through, you know, trainings to NACA and so on. And you're looking at what the recommendations are for good authorizing practices. This is what the national organizations with, the statute also says, we have to be aligned to. The good authorizing practices of national organizations, this is the recommendation nationwide.
And I think it takes away the, uh, the, the subjectivity. Well, it, should it be a three or should it be a four, should it be a two or a three, or it just, you either have everything. You don't, or you, or you have a majority? Or you don't at least have a majority of them met, so that's a much clearer, I think, a definition for the review.
Yeah, and how, how you describe it makes more sense, if, if we're talking about a majority or doesn't have a majority. You know what I mean, but it, it, for me, it wasn't really clear that it was like, okay, approaches is that you meet a majority of the criteria. I guess that's what I wasn't clear on.
Yeah.
That's actually, I think that's what Karina was just addressing, is, is they, that's probably something they can do better in the future. Is look at those and, and be more clear, is probably, uh, cause if you're, if you're thinking that KT, I'm sure applicants are thinking that too, right? Like, well, what exactly, you know, um, how many are, if I, if I miss on one thing, does that mean I get a? Does not meet or, you know, it, it definitely makes sense that it could be clarified more between the peer reviewers and that, that process.
That, that part is, is clear up here in the overall rubric. So up here is where, and this goes for all of the questions, the majority of acquired elements are present.
Yeah, cause I think we had more responses from applicants. When we had the five, it's like, I should have got, you know, and it was, th- there were more. Concerns slash complaints about how they scored, you know, and this, um, I think since we've done this. We've had significantly less.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks.
And, yeah, I, I mean, and I actually, I, I like the, you know, meets, approaches, does not meet for the new applications. It only becomes a problem, an issue for, for us in our annual evaluations of existing charter schools. With.
And that makes more sense to me, is whenever you're assessing them, yeah, that you would have a wider net to be able to say, okay. Whether this person is, you know, a B or a C or a D or an F, not this, and A in F.
Yep, absolutely.
But, but yeah, but for new charter schools, you don't wanna be opening C charter schools, um, so. But, but yeah, but for new charter schools, you don't want to be opening C charter schools. Um, so.
Okay.
And I.
Think that's it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Took out, um, yeah, the appendices and attachments because it was moved.
Right, and wait, I, what did I, oh, I just clean up if app that shouldn't be capitalized if it's in parentheses. Okay, yeah, and the append- yeah.
Yeah.
And that's it. So shall we move on to part B? Okay. Okay, um, and obviously we'll take draft out, um. And this is just cleanup for conciseness. Oh, I should probably make this bigger, right? And that's it. There's really nothing much to part B. It's just the executive summary.
Right.
And so is this language cleanup okay? Okay. And now part C. And so these, um, again, I took out the periods after headings. What's removed here is the whole rubric because it's in part A.
Right.
So they can look at it. And so really, all this is, is questions and sections for their responses. So no changes, no changes.
Yeah, F two and F three, I saw you had a question about if those were duplicating each other.
Yes, I did. Um, so yeah, so should, so are these, are these really the? Of course, there's a page break, so, um, I should change the view so that it doesn't show page breaks. So F two, provide a yearly calendar and daily schedule that completely comply with all state requirements to ensure effective, successful implementation. And then F three is provide a clear, comprehensive and cohesive explanation of how the educational philosophy, instructional methods and yearly calendar and daily schedule will be effective with the anticipated student population.
They seem. So if we just add an effectiveness question to F two, we would combine them. Like, um, keep F two.
Yeah.
And then, and it actually, it says, make, so can you go back up to F two? Okay. So ensure effective, successful implementation. And then before the asterix, but explain the effective, explain why this is effective for your anticipated students.
Actually, so I think down here, this is edu- F three is educational philosoph- well, no, it's educational philosophy. So do you want to include?
Just about being how those are going to be effective with your anticipated population. That's what the question's about.
Right.
So, I mean, they are a little bit different because F two is really just the pa- the calendar and the daily schedule.
Yeah.
And then F three is about effectiveness.
Yeah.
Like actually explaining the effectiveness. So they might be good to be.
I think we're fine to keep them.
Oh, this is just a note from my contractor to check the, the law reference. I'm not sure why, but I'll double check that. Why, why do you have a law reference here and not everywhere?
That is a good question, uh, because Rachel put it in. Let me see. That's true. We, if, if we don't have it throughout, we don't need it here, right?
Well, it was because this is why I asked before, because on mine, it was highlighted in the previous one, you know? And Bridget said it was because the, it wasn't, it was basically a summary. So they, so she put the reference in at that point so that if they wanted to see the full text, they could go to that. Is that why this is here?
Yes.
So that's why, you know, I questioned it before.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, upon reflection, I don't think we need the reference here. Because we don't have them throughout.
Because then it seems like we would need a reference to why they're doing assessments. Then we would need a reference to why they're doing.
This does, I, I think this is captured directly out of the statute.
That sentence above it?
The assessment, I'm looking at the governing body creation, so.
Oh, on the part A?
No, on, on the C, under governing, under organizational framework, under the governing body creation capacity, that language, I think, is ca- is the, um, statute. Capturing the language of the statute, I think that's why it's referenced there. But I'm looking, I, I'm not at the assessment, so let me look at where you are at the assessment.
I just, I just.
To get that, anytime there's a reference to statute, that that is, that passage preceding the reference is directly from statute. That's typically the way that.
Yeah, the governing body one kind of makes sense there. I don't understand why the.
Yeah, I don't, I, I agree with you. I, I, I think it should, I think it should go.
Okay, yeah. And as should the reference to the statute then. That whole sentence should go.
No, that's fine. That should include a clear plan for valuing student performance.
But the clarify, just the, the question on the table was, this is a reference to statute.
I think it is.
Yeah, so that's what it is.
This is capturing what the statute says.
Then, as I've said, anytime there's a statute listed, the piece, the sentence before the reference is straight from statute.
Right.
But does a statute, would a statute say should?
I don't know.
I don't know.
That just seems odd to me. It should, I feel like it should be must.
At it and it's.
Or shall or will.
Exactly.
I mean, A B eight E says a description of the charter school's plan for evaluating student performance, the types of assessments that will be used to measure student progress.
Okay.
Towards achievement. I mean, it's long and it's not replicated there.
Oh, so it's not verbatim from the statute.
So we should remove it.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't have a problem if like up at the summary or something, you have a footnote because but that you ought to reference this whole twenty-two A B eight, which is charter application contents, if you want to do it.
Yeah.
And this, um, yeah, the we don't have, you know, a long section like this before most of the questions. Do we need it for assessment and accountability?
Can this information, can this information be found somewhere else? Is it duplicating this information?
I would have to go back and look in part A.
I think this is the only section for assessment. That's what I thought.
So I would say if, if this is, I would say if it is duplicating, I would
Okay.
Be open to doing it. If not, leave it. Okay.
I think it's if not.
I don't, I don't think it's anyplace else.
I don't think it is either.
Okay.
Delinated, and I think.
Yeah, it is. So I, as, as far as formatting goes and the reference to the statute, should that green N M S A twenty-two eight B eight E be at the end of these two paragraphs, you know, since the two paragraphs are referencing the statute, this might be a Julia question. Or does the, only the first paragraph reference the statute or summarize the statute?
I thought we decided to take out the statutory reference there.
Okay, that would be, that would be.
Yeah, even better.
That would be wonderful.
And that can just be a footnote somewhere. If people want to reference the statute, they can just have at it.
Yeah, talk to the statute person.
Yeah.
As per twenty-two A B.
Yeah.
Well, and the only thing is that since you're providing this application for them, it has to comply with A B eight.
Yeah.
But, and since we've undertaken it, we need to make sure that this complies with the statute.
Right.
Um, but otherwise, they don't need to go to the statute otherwise.
Right, because I mean, I mean, the authority for the application isn't statute, it is you, the commission.
Well, I.
I mean, I mean, ultimately, yes, we have to be in compliance with statute, but you can, as the commission can, you know, add more requirements than what statute includes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Statute require, sets the minimum.
Right.
And we can always exceed the minimum.
Though Bridget, have you gone back to A B eight and just said, you know, for example, it says it must include a mission statement? So is that in, has, have you gone through and double checked it the reverse way? Just.
No, I have not.
We should do that. Like, is there a mission statement section somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah, there absolutely is. So then the same thing should happen under, um, governing body creation capacity. Because there's the reference to twenty-two A B.
Yeah, it's at the end.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah, and I think as far as formatting and using statute, either taking it out or putting it at the end.
Okay.
You know, just as a, for consistency in formatting or statute.
Okay, I made a suggested change under waivers. Because the, the original read, you know, statute for which waiver is requested under twenty-two dash two dash two one. They're not requesting it under that. They're requesting it under this, twenty-two two B five C. They're requesting to be waived from other sections of twenty-two two two one. So it's, it's actually the section of twenty-two dash two dash two one for which the waiver is being requested. If that makes sense. Julia's frowning. That's always bad.
Say that again, Bridget.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Okay, so this, this section of statute, twenty-two eight B five C, this is the section of the Charter Schools Act that says the department shall waive requirements about teaching load, length of school day, staffing, blah, 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 and may waive graduation requirements. Um, it, there's also, there's something in there that says, you know, other waivers for other sections of twenty-two dash two dash two one, um, two point one may be requested. And so it's, the way I read this is if they're requesting waivers of other sections of the public school code, they put it, they, they specify which ones under here.
They have to apply for the discretionary waivers.
But.
So.
Not to us, right?
Correct.
They apply to PED.
They apply to PED, but they're asking for waivers of parts of twenty-two two two point one. They're not asking for waivers under that section. They're asking for waivers under twenty-two eight B five C. That's, that's the section that allows them to request waivers.
Could we, could we even back up? This is a charter school application to the P E C. Waivers go to PED.
Yes.
I'm, I'm even wondering why you have this in here at all. I'm not sure where you guys are.
Historically, historically, the P E C wanted to be aware of which waivers the applicants were going to seek to, um, exercise.
But we do it in the contract process, not necessarily. I don't think in the new application, it's necessary, but it is embedded in our contracts so that we know that they are making use of these waivers. I don't even know honestly, at that point in time, whether an applicant would be fully aware of a discretionary waiver that they might be. By the contract time, they should be, and it should be in our contract so that we're aware of especially that a discretionary waiver that they've been granted. Because it did become an issue at one time because we had a school that had it, we didn't know it, and it became a, a, there was a funding issue. But I don't think it's really necessary in the
Right here.
Application.
So you want to cut this entire section?
For the implementation of your checklist, I think it would be important because they're going to be doing their contract negotiations during that implementation year. But I think here, I don't.
There's, there's no requirement for, for these or.
Right, right.
So then we would delete this whole section and then renumber all the rest of these, et cetera.
Right.
It should be done automatically, but somehow, one issue with, one issue with these documents, um, and I had wished that I had time sort of, or asked my contractors to, you know, don't do save as, just start with a clean document and, but we didn't, we didn't do that because there's the, these documents have been used year after year, and there's all this layering of old formatting in there.
Yeah. So, um, I have a question on the red line part of, uh, s- school size. Under the financial framework. And I know we've talked about this a lot because it says, if approved, the actual funding will be determined by PED, School Budget Bureau. Lottery applications submitted and registrations completed prior to May fifteenth. And I just want to make sure that's the right date because I know we've talked about this a lot, and I thought May fifteenth was too late. I thought there had been discussions that the cutoff was going to be significantly earlier because May fifteenth is when budgets are done. So I thought there was an earlier hard set date, wasn't, am I wrong?
So each school, oh, sorry, go ahead, Missy. Well, eh, okay, so each school gets a, a date by which time their budget has to be complete, and it starts earlier and, you know, they stagger it. But because this says prior to May fifteenth, do you think that this is covered? It sounds to me like it is.
You know, I've gotten the calls over, you know, a while from budget folks and saying, you know, we need to set the date, and I know a Don came once and spoke with us when Paul Aguilar was the deputy secretary, he came and spoke to us and said, it can't be that, that late. It can't be, and I know it says by May fifteenth, and they had nothing to do with when their submission date was. They wanted a date, and I, and I thought, and we had this discussion last year when we did this.
Yeah.
And I thought it was like, uh, you know, it has to be set by March. And I know there was a new applicant two years ago that it became an issue because they, they thought they were relying on additional time to be able to use for the submission of their budget, and they said, you can't do that. So I don't have the date. It was.
Right, it's none of the schools.
Bureau who came to us and, you know, the deputy secretary who came to us and said, it needs to be clear. Who came to us and said, it needs to be clearer that it has to be like March fifteen, just as a random. And that's the cutoff date, and that's going to be the. Student number that's going to be used for the budget. And whatever adjustments will, will be made, would, would then, wouldn't be made until the fortieth day. Once they, um, you know, once all the kiddos showed up or didn't show up. But that would be their initial operating budget. Would be the budget based on the student enrollment as of, and I'm just. And I'm, I'm positive it was like a March date.
Okay, so, so just a little bit of historical context for the other commissioners. This is a challenge, right, because it's a brand new school. And it's projecting its enrollment and has no idea who's actually going to surface. You know, this is why I think looking at community um demand. For the charter is really important and the community in um. The, the, the look at the community when approving the charter application to see that there are folks that are saying. I want my kid in this school and I, you know, I will enroll them, really matters. We've had, generally, it's tended to be that schools over project their enrollment. Um, and the kids don't surface, that's what's happening right now with the one school that um. That opened this school year, right, they over projected, and so they get more budget than they actually get to keep all year. And their budget gets adjusted and they just make do, the, the. Other side of the coin, which is to underfund a charter school. Puts them in a really precarious situation because. They might not have enough money to hire all the teachers. So it's a fine dance that we do with the school. Um, gauging how many lottery applications they have. And working with school budget to say this is what we should fund. You know, I, I, I am committed to, and I've had conversations already with the folks that are currently in school budget. And you know, when people leave, there's different. Um, perspectives about how we do this and what makes sense. Um, but we've had conversations about keeping in close contact to, to. Get a really good sense for what that number is, and I would like for it to be. As flexible as possible for the schools sake, because if we give them a cutoff date of March. Then, you know, uh, there's recruiting that happens between March and May and into the summer. And yet, I also want to be really careful and not um create enemies within our school budget bureau. By having schools over project, so.
I think, but also there's benefit to under projecting. Because should your enrollment increase beyond what you projected, you get the growth units. In the, in the spring.
Well, yeah, so the school would see money, their, their. Monthly S E G, they would see a change in their monthly S E G probably. January or February, which is a long time to wait, if you have to pay for special ed. Cause that's the other thing, they're not getting reimbursements for federal funds quite yet, I mean, I, I think it's better to.
Try to get it within five students.
Try to, of course, of course, but to err on the side of a few more students projected. And then they become a little bit more careful with their budget as their budget gets cut and adjusted again in either. January or February.
And I wholeheartedly would like to have the flexibility, I'm not trying to be inflexible, I'm just saying that. It has historically been school budget that has come to us and said. You know, you can't, it can't wait until. They're submitting their budget. That there has to, there has to be a hard fast deadline that. Their budget is going to be based on their enrollment as of. And it hasn't been us that said we want that, it has been. School Budget Bureau year after year after year. And, you know, sitting down and them coming to us and said, this is a big problem for us, and we tried to respond to that. So I, if this, if this May fifteenth is fine, I'm fine with it, but. I want to make sure School Budget Bureau is fine with. You know. On whatever on their. In student enrollment is at the time that they submit their budget, period.
Right, and I think that because this doesn't say that is the date, but before this date, that, you know, we can work with that. And I'm committed to work with school budget, Missy, were you going to add something? Yeah.
So I just spoke with Melissa Sanchez, and she said that for. For this year's implementation year schools, she's going to ask school budget. To wait until June first to create the operational budget for those schools. That would allow those schools the time, so she was thinking like a May first. Date would be appropriate, but not much before that.
Yeah, I think that's so smart that we can, we can request from school budget, let's hold off on the new schools. As late as possible.
But here's my other, okay, so now I'm going to go back because now I've rethought this. Only because we're trying to make this a permanent thing, so do we want, do we want May fifteenth in there?
No.
This isn't something we're going to change.
I would, I would work it around PED's timeline, right? Because it's really, this is really a working piece between PED and the school.
So I think we have to put language in here that just indicates that the, it's um. What it has to include, and it's going to be completed by the deadline. Given to them by. The Charter School Division or School Budget, whatever it is, and we remove the May fifteenth date.
You're saying you don't want any date.
Put a period after.
I don't want any data. It's just going to be a date provided to them by.
That kind of leaves the school in limbo, I think.
But we don't want to change this application every year.
I understand that.
So they are in limbo, in, in a sense, because they're going to be give, each new applicant. Group is going to be given the date.
That they need to do it by, yeah, we have to remember, there's going to be this additional, outside of this document. There's going to be an additional one pager of all their dates, that is meaningful for them from now on. Can we just, for now, can we just say completed in spring of the implementation year?
Yeah, I mean, my point is that this is like. Down the line importance, not right, for the application. Right, 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 I don't mind flagging it for them, because it's an issue, but.
Do you want to though flag it in red the way it is? I don't think so either.
You know, and given that they are going to be receiving the one pager of dates relevant to them that year. You know, I could see how we could leave it open. Leave it dateless. Since they will be receiving, since they will be receiving that additional document with dates.
Cause we're parsing out dates.
For them for that year.
And I don't know, I, I mean, I haven't seen one of these recently, but I can tell you, it used to be that the budgets were just. Thany. That in these applications. It was like, you guys don't get it, and so there was a sense of trying to tell them, this is what. The public education budget process looks like, so I don't mind it, but. And maybe, maybe your chart is helping them, because I just remember you couldn't even. I mean, you almost had to skip this section, it just wasn't even relevant.
Okay, so we are okay with um. Spring of the implementation year, and then we provide the dates later. Were there any other sections of the application that the commission wanted to look at? This is where we have the, at, the appendices and attachments where they check, they check if they're attached. I would say, like, I, I do, I don't, be, and the reason why I'm especially confident is because of the quality. Of the applications that were received this year, and so for this to consolidate. What was already, I mean, to me, if you're, if, for them to be able to provide that quality of application. Says a lot about the application requirements, so if we're making this just. Simpler, more modified, but we're keeping. The, the great parts of what it is, I don't feel like I need to go back, you know, go through all, every single little piece and improve it. I mean.
Yeah, I just have. I think it's in, and I hate to say this, I think it's in B, but let me find. I'll tell you what I'm, I'm trying to look at. There's a, there's a section, and I think it, it's probably in, I think it was in B. There's a section that talks about um when they submit the, the application. And it's reviewed, and there's a determination as to whether the application has been, that has been submitted. Is complete.
That would have been in part A. Do you want me to pull that back up?
Yep, yeah, because there's a. There's a paragraph in there. That I just quickly like to take a look at.
And it, it was, had to do with the application being complete?
Cause the next.
Okay, is, is this it?
Let me see.
Is it the, the kit contains four main parts plus appendices, is that it?
Well, I'll tell you what I'm, I'm looking at, because I saw it, and maybe it's been, maybe it's been taken out of the edit. Cause there was a section in there that, that said. Um, the application will be reviewed and it'll be determined whether it is complete or not. If a, if an application is considered incomplete, the applicant. The applicant team would have the ability to. Appeal to the Charter School Division.
Right here, oh, yes, here it is, it's under, it's overview of the review process. Applicants will receive written notification of deficiencies, not more than. It's part A, page two. Written notification of deficiencies, not more than ten business days after the submission. If income, if deemed incomplete, the applicant's file will be closed. The applicant team may within five business days of receiving notice of incomplete application. Request a review by the P E C at its next regularly scheduled meeting. No new information and no additional submissions will be accepted or reviewed by the P E C or C S D.
So my question for Julia was, is it in the statute? That an applicant team has to have the ability to appeal it, because I'm of the mind. That if you didn't. Submit. A completed app, a complete application. You know, and this concept that, because I think it could become somewhat arbitrary on our part. If, you know, someone comes up and says, wait a minute, because. I'll go back a, a couple of years ago, we had an applicant team who did not put notification into their. Local school district when they did the N O I, so we said no. And um, at that time, this was in there, they did come up and appeal, and they cried. You know, crocodile tears, because their rationale was, we didn't put in the um. N O I to the local school district because we work there and we don't want to be fired. Because they know that we're put, we want to start a charter school, we'll put on the big boy pants. And, you know, but it could become very arbitrary, you could have, you know, a bunch of people, you know. Fall for the tears and say, oh yeah, that's not fair, so I, I would. Strike that if we. If we don't have to have it. Why give, why give a group, because to me. Even though it says no new information. No new information and no additional submissions will be accepted or reviewed, so that means if we. Granted the appeal, we would still be looking at an incomplete application. At the very end, and why would you want to do that?
The way I read this is it gives them an opportunity to say. But no, Madam Chair, our application was complete, will you look at it? Because that's what it says here, if such a request is received and the P E C finds that the application was complete. Processing timelines will be adjusted.
I know, but. If it was deemed incomplete. By the Charter School Division, and, you know, and. Why would we?
Well, I think, I, so, um. Twenty two eight B five. Sorry, twenty two eight B six. Says that a chartering authority may deny an application if it's incomplete or inadequate. So, long ago, and you've had a lot of history since my recollection. C S D was very frustrated with having to do the whole application. Process, just for an application that were like, this is incomplete, we don't, they, and so they wanted a process. Long ago to say, this one's not ready, it's, it's incomplete. So we're not going to spend all the staff time and the review and all the stuff. So this looks to me like an intent to, to walk that line.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so.
This as a charter authority may deny an application, it doesn't say C S D can, so maybe.
Because what, what, and this is what we have said, this is just, this really just speaks to a pure technical review. They've submitted the A, B, C, D, and E. You know, and in particular, the budget submission was submitted in the, because. In the budget submission, it specifically says, you must use the template. That is, that is here, and you can't alter that template, because we've had applicants. Who did, and we couldn't read the, the budget, and they said, well, you have to print it out and then tape it. Because it goes this way, and it's like, no, so, um. It's purely. Do they have all the pieces, not looking at what the pieces say, but do they have all the individual pieces? And is that, most particularly, is the budget submitted in the format that is required? Pure and simple, and if they left out, if they left out a piece, or they, or they submitted on the wrong template. It would be deemed incomplete, but not incomplete in terms of responses. Or anything like that. If a. If an applicant. Failed to answer certain questions in the application. That would not give them the opportunity to say it's incomplete, we could determine. As we go through the process, that was an incomplete application, but we do, we're obligated to. Go through the entire process. Am I, did I make myself clear?
I think, yeah, so.
You know what, it seems like um that you just want that, in paragraph three, the last sentence. If such a request is received and the P E C finds the application was complete. The application processing timelines will be adjusted, but it seems that. It would be caught by the C S D. As incomplete before it ever came to the.
Well, it would, and that's what, the, the way I read this is that. It's, it's if the, if we, the C S D make a mistake, then the applicants and. Can come straight to you and say Charter Schools Division made a mistake, and you have to double check us.
Well, so let me ask this, if an. If an applicant. When, when an applicant sub, submits. If it was going to, if they were going to get notification that it was deemed incomplete. Would they not get an email or a phone call and say it's incomplete? The applicant would then have an opportunity to say, but wait a minute, I attached E.
Yes.
To this, and here it is, so that it wouldn't even go as, so it, they, they, so that it's fixed. So that the only way that we would get notification. That it was incomplete, it was truly incomplete, that any potential mistakes by the Charter School Division. And oh, I missed that, um, has already had that opportunity to be.
Yes, in, in reality, with the current Charter Schools Division. Yes, and in reality, with the current Charter Schools Division staffed as it is now, led as it is now, if an applicant said, no, that was complete, we sent this, we would look at it and say, oh yes, you're right, it, it is complete. I, I, this process sort of presupposes a hostile Charter Schools Division that's not willing to look and double check itself.
It does.
And frankly, it's insulting to us.
Yeah, it, it does, and, and that's why I was put in there, because of a hostile charter school.
Yeah, right.
Division, so, but I, you know, I just get concerned about that appeal process because I think it can just be really arbitrary as to.
And it doesn't even say the word appeal in here, does it? It just says, the timeline would be adjusted.
No, it does.
It does say appeal.
Where's, what, where, where's the word appeal?
The application, um.
No, you're right, Commissioner Boy, it says may request a review by the P E C.
Right, may request a review.
So I think, I mean, if we just removed the very last sentence, it seems like it would suffice. If such a request is received and the P E C finds the application was complete and the application processing timelines will be adjusted, because I mean, all this does is talk about collaboration, you know, and transparency. And so if the C S D made a mistake, basically we know they would own it and request from the P E C that a new, that new favor would be granted for the school to have extra time.
Well, why can't we just say, why can't we give the, the opportunity to request the review directly to the charter school division?
There we go, yeah.
You know?
Well, but are, are we, are we relinquishing the statutory responsibility that we are the ones that are approving? We get the recommendation from Charter School Division saying, we think this is complete, here's the review, here's the peer reviews and things like that. We're accepting that, and if we disagree with that, we can override that. It's the same thing as when they make a recommendation for the renewals. We can add to their recommendations or we can deny their recommendation. I think this is just clearly identifying that the P E D is the ultimate decider of whether or not the, 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 uh, application is complete. Not, I mean, there, there's that, does that make sense?
It does, but I think, I, I would still like, I think, the first step that they can ask for a review by the charter school division, let the charter school division re-review it, fix, have the opportunity to fix, if it was an easy fix, and then after, after that review, come to us if, if there's still, if there's still an unhappiness, yeah. Rebecca?
Um, it just seems like, and, uh, I mean, for, I don't know if this has happened before, so if it's a actual problem that this is, that this process hasn't worked before, but also when you, I, it, to me, it just made me think of like, you know, if you go before a judge, they make a decision, then you don't go back to that judge and be like, are you sure? Like, can you review that again and just see if you'll change your mind this time? Like, it just seems weird to go back to the people who made the decision and say, hey, can you see if you'll change your mind this time? And then if not, then we'll go to another entity, so.
Often it's because they missed, they, they did miss something.
Well, and that's what, I think it's, it, to me, it just doesn't make sense.
Can you go to the mic?
What we've had in the past, like the Chair said, is somebody who's, who's turned in the budget of their application, not using the P E C's application or changing it in some way. And then if we've said, you're incomplete and it won't go through, the, um, they want to complain to the commission and say, but we, you just have to print it out and tape it all together. And then they get told a no, so, yes, when they're turning, that's why during the trainings, you know, I want to have a, I want to see a test document. They can submit sections ahead of time, they can submit, you know, and then we can, we can let them know, we don't, we don't read through and check to make sure they answered everything. That's for the peer reviewers, that's not for C S D. But can we, did we get part A, part B, part C, part D, appendices? Can we open them and do we see something and is the budget on the correct template?
Right, because, and I have to say that the example of the one school that didn't use the correct template, they were not, it wasn't, it, they were not given notice. Or if they were, we still heard that, we still did the community input hearing for that. And they were told at that time, we won't look at the budget because it wasn't submitted in the form that you were supposed to, and you were told that. They pulled their application the day of the, the hearing here, but, um, you know, I, I guess, um, I, I worry about arbitrariness.
Well, this, this stat, that doesn't, that example doesn't really make sense for this timeline. From what, it says it's 10 days after they get the submission of the application.
Right.
So how would you hold a public hearing? I mean, that's months away.
The application went through.
So, so that's not, but that's not what this, this is talking about those in that first 10 days. The, the, the determination is made that it's incomplete, then that school can come to the P E C and say, we think it is complete.
They, they didn't.
But that's, that, it, that seems like a completely different scenario.
Commissioner Bur, we don't have 10 days, I have, I have to make sure that it's done on June 1 because the peers get it on June 1, so.
Which is still well before the public hearing, community hearing. I mean, all that's still very well before all of that.
But it will affect all of the other timelines, because if it doesn't go to the peer reviewers in time, they won't have their review and so we won't schedule it.
So maybe push up, and I'm, I'm hearing what Rebecca's saying. I'm hearing all of this, and it's like, this is this, uh, more of an argument for telling them, for moving one, the data that we want applications, move it up to maybe May 1st and not May 31st, right? Like, we don't want them to turn this in at the very last second, where we don't, hold on, where we don't even have a chance to say, you know what, you're missing this material. Whereas if we were to make maybe the deadline April 30th, it gives us a little time to be able to say, you know what, this is not in the right format, so we can't even consider it at this point. And that way they can go back and say, whoops, we really blew it. And that way, things are in a timely fashion to the peer review people. Also here where it says applicants will receive written notification of the deficiencies not more than 10 business days. I mean, that, there, that does put an onus on us to say, if there's something that's not right, we're going to let you know within 10 business days, um, which can't be done if they're turning this thing in relative to peer review, if they're turning this thing in on May 31st.
But I think statute says June 1, so we can't.
It says you may waive it by agreement, though.
Or, but we can add language that says, um, to better serve you and to have time to, you know, check for any child, you know, possible application challenges in your application. We encourage you to turn this in by, and then that gives us plenty of time. But once, my feeling is, like the other things in turn, in terms of making it only electronic, one certain, you know, you miss some dates, you miss some dates. And the, like a judge, for instance, what, what Rebecca was saying, a judge not going to say, you know, I'm sorry you had that, you know, you know, challenging family hardship, this was a drop dead date.
Yeah.
I have no trouble, because if they can't even meet that, you know.
I get that, and, and my, my challenge is, if you're looking at the dates, if a, if an applicant then, because they have by statute, if they want to wait till May 31st or whatever, you know, whatever the close of business, whatever that day is, um, they can. Because the statute allows them to. If they, if it was deemed incomplete, and I know they do it in less than the, the 10 days, but if it's deemed incomplete and they want to appeal it to us, that appeal's not going to be heard until whatever our June meeting date is. And then that does impact everything else, because now the peer reviewers wouldn't get it potentially until three quarters of the way into June, and we've got a community input hearing that's already scheduled in July. So it, it affects the capacity interviews. That's why I think it's just a lot easier to take out that opportunity to appeal it.
I like the opportunity of not appealing, sorry, it was just continuing on there. I like the idea of not giving them the chance to appeal. If they're turning it in too late, they're turning it in too late. They want to do it on May 31st at 5:00 P M, they're eliminating any opportunity for us to be partners in helping them get it in correctly.
Right.
And that's a choice that they're making, which is why I would include language in a sentence. You are encouraged to get your application in as early as possible to allow time, uh, for preliminary review. Thank you, Rebecca, sorry about that.
That they got, they would know that our May meeting is this date, so that if they didn't, if we, if we didn't take out the appeal process and we left it in, the school would have to know that the only way we can hear an appeal is if they put it in at the beginning of the May so that they, we could hear the appeal at our May meeting.
There you go.
I, you know, I, I would prefer to have the appeal out, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm still just trying to really see the actual problem. I mean, if, if the timelines are adjusted, I mean, the timelines get adjusted, I don't think, like, that C S D will grapple with that and they'll figure it out. So I would say either, sorry, I would say either, yeah, remove it to where it's not, but I do not, I'm just not supportive of adding an additional appeal part to the C S D before it comes to the P E C again. Like, it just doesn't, that, that, I do not like that they're going to go back to C S D and say, hey, can you change your minds? And, and then, then after they have to go through that again, then they say, no, we were right the first time. And then it goes back, and now we're at the P E C, and now we're going to have to do the same thing that they would have done originally. So I'm not in favor of adding an additional step.
So is, is the, is the question just, should we delete this paragraph in its entirety?
All right, I'm, I'm in favor of removing the whole appeals process because it does back up the entire, because I don't think it aggregates any of our responsibilities, because it's our staff's responsibility to do the technical reviews, and that's all they're doing. They're not making any assessment of quality of the application.
Can I just say, we shouldn't delete the entire paragraph, but the sentence that starts with the applicant team may, everything after that, because we want to let them know that if it's incomplete, their file is closed. Period.
Well, yeah, I'll go to what we've gotten from court decisions too. When we've, when we, there was a technical mistake made, courts have decided we were wrong. And with, and I think, you know, maybe counsel could, could advise us on this, is if we don't want to be so arbitrary and capricious, court language sometimes, in saying, sorry, C S D says it was wrong, we may think it was right, but C S D says it was wrong, too bad. Courts could come back and say, no, you abrogated your responsibility, the decision by C S D was, was arbitrary and capricious. Whether we think it was or not, if the court can decide that, then we're, we're left. And I, so I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a decision, in a position where charter schools who feel that they have a valid application are just said, no, you have to wait a year and, and fix it and everything, and they go to court, and so we just have more court proceedings.
Where's the right to appeal?
So I think, I understand what you're saying, uh, but I think that, that path and guidance shouldn't be given by us or the C S D. So if their application is incomplete and closed, then, and there's a technical glitch or whatever, that's, that's, the onus is on the school to come forward to the C S D and say, you know, but, and then the C S D would come to us and say, but, you know, but I think the word appeal needs to be left off of everything in this.
Appeal, I agree, the appeal may be the wrong word, but they can request review.
Sure, re-review or something, yeah, but the onus is on them, I mean,
Right.
sure, I mean, you can review anything, I want to review who washed my apple, you know, so.
Yeah, because appeal, I, I agree, appeal may be too strong a word, but I, I.
It's too open door.
It's too open door, and does set up some legal parameters, whereas if we say they may request a review, we're not saying that it has to be, but they can request that review. And I think, you know, C S D, I think of a reasonable request for review saying, hey, you, you said this was incomplete, but you, you say it's incomplete because of this, oh, it's here, and it's not, you know, a format thing, and it's like, oh, we, we totally changed the format. It's something that they actually did honestly overlook.
So, so then why don't we do this? So the sentence that starts with the applicant team may, um, within however many business days, request review by the C S D, from the C S D, it, should there be any concern or something like that?
Well, the other, the other way you might do it, which goes back to the statute in that is you could say, the first two sentences, the applicant's file will be deemed, will be closed, and uh, the P E C will, um, I don't know, and, and you could send it to the P E C at that point, because I really do think that this started with a whole bunch of terrible applications that the P E C didn't want, P E D didn't want to spend a lot of time on.
Yeah.
So if you just took out the rest of it, which is really like a lot of process, will be closed and, you know, C S D will, uh, recommend denial of the application is incomplete, then, then there's a whole process that's set up after that. Because I could see when it came up, you know, you have terrible application A, it's closed, you do B, C, and D, then when C S D comes forward, they say, first one's closed because it was incomplete. And then the school can come forward and you can have that fight later. But then, we haven't held them up, we haven't put in a whole ton of process, and you haven't given up what you're supposed to do in the statute. That's what I would suggest is, and take out everything else so that Karina would come forward and say, we got five applications, one was closed, it's incomplete, here are the other four. The one closer in completeness, they can come back and we can have a whole fight later.
Later.
Like, at that time, because then if they come and say, we're here, you can do whatever you need to do with it.
You mean, the, the, it, so, I'm just trying to figure this out. So if an applicant, are you saying that if an applicant team was notified that it was incomplete, they could still say, no, we're going through with the process and we go through with the process, or where's, where's the later fight? If we wanted to fight it out later, I'm just trying to figure out when the later fight is.
What I hear Julia saying is, the applications go in, and the example was, the C S D says, hey, these four we're moving forward with because they're great, this one is closed, they've been notified that it's closed. And right at that time, it's up to that applicant who's been closed to say, equally, why are we closed? And it's because, you know, we listed it's an incomplete application, and they say, well, no, it's not. That when we can, when then we can approach that at that time.
I get that, but that would be then like our June meeting and when, so that's where the rest of the, the timelines get messed up, because now it's our June meeting when, um, Karina comes to us and says, here's the list. So that applicant team that was, that was deemed incomplete, they come to our meeting in June and say, no, and this is what it is, and we review it then, now.
All those timelines are just a mess.
Exactly.
And which is why.
And that's what gets to be the problem, it's like, when does the peer review team get to do it? When do they have their capacity interview? And we have to, we have to have a whole separate set of different timelines and including not even potentially having capacity interviews at the same time, because we don't have all the information, because it's all been.
Agreed, which is why I would on that point, thank you, which is, which is why I would encourage there to be a sentence. We encourage applications to be turned in as early as possible to allow for, you know, expeditious review, whatever, whatever you all want to say. But just, we encourage applications to be turned in as early as possible.
I would say highly encourage.
Highly, so you don't screw everything up, darn it?
Right, that's why I said in that, um, calendar timeline that schools are given every year, applicants are given every year, there would have to be something in that that said, if, if it's not reviewed by May 10, it can't be heard at the, at the May P E C meeting, and that's when you'd have to appeal for a review.
I just have a question, because this is all new to me, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around everything that's been said. So, when an applicant receives something, they say, this is incomplete, they get that email or.
They get that email or telephone call or something, um, they don't, they don't have the opportunity to just fix it right then and there?
Well, it seems to me like, say they forget to include their five-year budget, right? As, and, and we let them know, if it's before the deadline, they submit it.
Right.
Right? And if it's after, that's what's questionable here. I don't think that if the deadline has passed. Oh, whoops, here it is.
Right. The only, the only, the only time it would be fixable is if that school could prove. That it was in the original email. And somehow someone missed it when they were opening up on CSD's end. But otherwise, yeah, if you wait till May 31st. And you accidentally left off part C.
Too bad, Becca.
Karina, how long does it usually take for the review team to review an application?
For completeness or?
Yeah, like from start to finish, like.
Okay, well, so.
Like when they get one, like how?
Yeah, I would defer to Missy Brown. In the times that I have done it, you know, I think it could be maybe a day. Or two, depending on how many applicants and how many reviewers there are.
Yeah, that's my June 1st, that's what I do on June 1st. I'm looking at what they've put in, checking to see if I can open it. There's something there, I let them know.
Oh, sorry, that's not what I mean. I mean the peer reviewers.
So the peer reviewers have a very short period of time.
Yeah.
Got like.
Three weeks.
Right, within that three weeks, they have to read the application, they have to have a, a norming.
Yep.
Session between them, um, and come up with their five specific school questions.
Do they do one school at a time and then move to the next one or, like, how does it work?
That's, that's.
Depends on the.
Depends on how many applications there are, depends on those team leaders.
So, what, cause what I'm looking at is, once again, I just, I, I do think it's. I don't think there's anything inappropriate, like if a school feels like they turned in a complete application. I feel like it's an appropriate measure for them to then come to the PEC to ask for a review. If they didn't do it, we can say no, right? Our proposed June meeting is June 16th, um, which would only give the next week. For, in order for the timeline to not change, I should say that. In order for the timeline to not be affected whatsoever, there is one full week after. In which that application can now gets, go to the reviewers and get submitted. I mean, I don't, I, the, the idea that the, the timelines are just blown out the water and, you know, like, it's just gonna be this huge awful horrendous. Thing to, to go through this process even in June is a little. I mean, that's why I was, I, I guess I just have like this faith in CSD to be like, okay. Here's our, here, we, we just got the, the ball was hit, it got the, you know, it, we thought it was a, a foul ball. Okay, never mind, it, it actually is coming in bounds and now we gotta take care of it. And I just feel like they would, I don't know, I just have this. May, I believe this confidence in CSD to take that timeline and be like, okay, how are we gonna now make this work? You know, and, and once again, that's only if there's this extreme circumstance in which the applicant actually did have a flaw. In which they would get their application heard. I mean, ideally, this is just an opportunity for people to feel heard. But hopefully there wasn't a mistake, right? And so PEC confirms that and now it's not. That applicant hates CSD and they did a bad job. There's another entity that's taking a look at it, saying, nope, you, this is incomplete. Your file is closed, but if it needs to be back open again, I think CSD would be able to still make it work.
But it's not just the, it's not just the peer reviewers. It affects the capacity interview that comes after that and our ability to have the.
Why does it affect the capacity interview?
It's our ability to have all of the information for the community input hearing so that we can read it all. And have the appropriate questions for them. So there, there is, because the peer reviewers are.
Can I, but real quick, do we not get that application on June 8th regardless? I mean, we'll get that application, we can look at it.
But we don't get the information from the capacity interviews and we don't get the information from the peer reviewers.
You only get the.
On June 1. And that's information that, no, because.
Only the ones that are deemed complete. If, if CSD says the application isn't complete, we don't send it to the PEC on June 8th, that's. Could we change that? Like, could we modify that, that if they submitted appeal, that then it gets put in? I think, I mean, I, I think this process in here is a fairly decent process. I agree with Commissioner Robbins that. It is PECs, I mean, they are the avenue of appeal and, and yes, we shouldn't use the language appeal. But if, if we're careful, we are going to be careful, we're not going to, I mean, in practice. If there's an application that's incomplete, we're gonna let them know really fast. And we're gonna tell them, you know, if you think we made a mistake, let us know quickly. And, and then we'll double check and this won't come up and it won't blow up all the timelines. But I do think that it's good to have a process so that an applicant can appeal to the PEC.
And I don't have, I'm not having an issue with the review thing. I'm having an issue with the timeline and the commission having all of the information that they need. By the community input hearings, cause it goes beyond what's in the application.
Missy has a suggestion.
Hand up and then I wanna say something as well.
I'd like to suggest that we shorten the 10 business days for the notification to maybe five. Um, like I said, I mean, I do it in one, the only time when that's gonna be difficult is if somebody did not attend. The trainings and they didn't follow the naming conventions that we suggest. And I've got to hunt and peck and figure out what they've named part B and part C and part D and appendices. But again, um, you know, that, if we shorten that number of days. That should not impact any of then the PEC's, um, uh, process.
Well, wait a minute, we'd still, uh, and I'm sorry, we'd still have to review it if the, if the applicant team. Um, asked for the review, that review would still have to be done at our June meeting.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You know, so let me throw, so let me ask, okay, you can go.
So I, I, I think that what we can do then, because the timeline is of the most concern here.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, but I think it's only fair that if the applicant team feels there was some technical error. That they have the ability to speak up about it and that it gets reviewed, okay, that's only fair. So, in this paragraph, um, if we just take out the last sentence. The if such a request is received, it's a big if, you know.
And then figure it out.
Then figure it out as it comes, because it's gonna be really, it's gonna be less than 1%.
Yes.
Of our, it's gonna be less than 0.5% of our schools that have this situation.
Could, could we say timelines may be adjusted?
I think we should not say anything about timelines.
Yeah.
Or the word appeal, so no timeline word and no appeal word.
Well, and, and I kind of agree with that, cause honestly, you guys are gonna figure it out at your meeting. Karina's gonna be here, you're gonna find some resolution.
Just take out that, that whole last sentence there.
That's what I just said, yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah.
Starting with the word if such a request. Right?
And changing to five days.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so I think, right, does that work?
And I mean, it's possible, just throwing it out there, that if there was a concern that the timeline. Could potentially be affected, there is the capacity, if the commission wanted to. They could authorize a small subcommittee.
Oh, God.
To, to hold a small public meeting, it would have to be public.
Yeah.
But to hold a small public meeting and make that decision, so that you don't have to convene the whole commission.
Put that on this.
No, 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 I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility for.
Sure.
Down the road.
Yeah.
If it happened, that's an option. You could say, hey, we'll just convene the small subcommittee, it would be publicly held. So there'd be a, a record of it and, um, you know, it is what it is.
Yep, okay, great.
Take that sentence out, okay.
Just the last sentence, if such a.
Yeah.
You could also give the applicants three business days to request a review.
Yeah, I think we just should leave it at five. I mean, cause Missy's the one that doesn't. And so it's Missy's.
Yeah, the amount of days for the, for the review doesn't matter, it's the PEC meeting. When it's held, that's what backs the, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, what other horses can we beat? All right.
You know, but it, you know, it.
I just struggle with the hypothetical problems.
Well, and for me, a lot of it's not, because they've been real life, you know.
Yeah.
So.
That's why we create policies, because something happened.
I know, and that's because of one bad seed, you know. I know, but it's, okay, I hate to say this, but can we look at the capacity interview piece?
Wait, that's next, that's part D.
Do that.
So are we taking a break?
Are we ready?
All right, um, Madam Chair, are we ready for part D? Okay, so this section, there are no major structural changes, except physical structure change. I've got it portrait instead of landscape, um, page orientation. Um, I, all the changes are little formatting things and then little, um. Uh, edits for conciseness, except same thing as in, in part A. Um, I took out the does not meet all the requirements for meets, because it's obvious if they're getting approaches. And same thing for, um, for this rating, if they don't meet the previous one, obviously they're getting this one. One question I had is, do we want the same, um, terminology? Because we use falls far below F all the way through instead of does not meet.
I would prefer to keep a consistent, um, verbiage throughout.
Okay. So. So I'll, I'll go through and make those changes, um, afterwards. And so all these words says MAF will say MAD, does not meet. Um, so no edits, no edits. Um, I took out the word proposed a few places in the application because the whole thing refers to a proposed school. Um. I, I replaced some yours with the, um. In, in line with people's pronouns, I took him, her out or her, him and put in just head administrator. Um.
For this, instead of school at that point, we say the applicant.
Yeah.
So, because they're not a school yet.
Right. How will these processes, um.
Where are we looking at?
The processes are going to be put in place by the applicant to support the proposed school.
That's relevant for that, yeah.
Should we say proposed school? I mean, it was at the end, do we just move propose and put it?
You wanna put the word proposed in here? So every time we say school, you want, uh, does the, does the commission want it to say proposed school in all of the questions?
Well, it does say in some of them, so I think it either has to say it in some of them or none of them. You know, I know it is a proposed school.
Right.
Or we just.
It's a given, cause the whole thing is proposed, right? I would just leave it as school and call it a J.
Okay, okay.
David, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, I guess my issue is, is that they're, they're not a, uh, they're not a school yet. And so we don't wanna give them false hope that they, they will be a school just because. You know, of the, the language that's used in the questions.
Can we put the proposed school in question one and take it out in all the subsequent ones?
That, that's defined it as school.
Yeah, say proposed school parentheses, school, close parentheses, and then school from that point on is indicating proposed school.
So put school in parentheses in the first question?
Just refer to it as.
Very first time you.
Close school, like that.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, here's my, I, I've got two questions about this. Um. Do we have to embed the exact questions into this that is more permanent? And at some point in time, there may wanna be changes to the questions that are asked. You know, so do we have to, um, put the exact questions in here? And if so, I'm okay with that. But my bigger concern is, I don't know whether the questions actually show capacity well enough. So when you're looking at capacity interview and the questions, you know, on, and I've. I've done a number of workshops from NAXA even on capacity interviews. And there, you know, the guidelines really is that you get more out of giving like a. Real-life scenario and seeing during a capacity interview and seeing how that team would respond. To that, you know, what would you do if your head administrator did?
It's like situat, it's like when people are doing job interviews, you're giving them behavioral and situational questions. As opposed to anything that's either yes or no or, yeah, so you get a much better sense of who they are.
And how they work as a team.
Yeah.
You know, giving them, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever to, you know, talk about it. And really be able to think about, you know, and to me, that gives a greater sense of their capacity. Then, you know.
Yeah.
That's, that, that has been an overriding concern by the commission over all of this. It's like, you know, these questions are great, but I still don't, I, I have that nagging concern after. Always reading all the responses, have they really shown me that they have the capacity? And I saw Missy race, shaking her head, you know?
But isn't that then incumbent upon the, uh, review team when they're doing capacity interview? To be able to get a sense of, to get a sense of, did somebody write the application for them? Because, you know what I mean? Because now they've gotta actually answer questions face to face. And that's when the situational or behavioral could be done.
Except I don't know whether these questions get them to that point. That's my only, you know, that's what I'm asking. But I know they get the ones that are specific to the school, which they don't know. But I still think, if, you know, to me, we wanna know if they have the capacity to run that school. So the, the what-if questions give me a greater. Look into what, what folks can and cannot do.
I agree, uh, that these questions don't exactly, um, address their capacity. So the question it seems to me is, do we have to include them? So that the applicant teams know what they're going to be asked, um, or, or do we just tell them they're going to be asked specific questions? Some of them are gonna be school-specific and then write better questions.
Right, and that was my first question. Do we have to put the questions here? Can they not be promulgated at a later date and the school knows you're gonna have questions to answer? Director?
So, I, I didn't participate as closely in the process this year, but I did sit in on the capacity interviews. Um, part of the time, and I gotta tell you that it felt rather scripted. part of the time. And I got to tell you that it felt rather scripted. That said, I do think we should be able to provide some guidance to the applicant so that they aren't just fielding a question out of left field. So maybe instead of the specific questions, we give them categories of types of questions that we might ask.
Yeah. And I think that's fine. That guidance that you will receive a question.
Pertaining to.
Pertaining to, you know, A, B, and C. And that way those, all the questions can then be created, you know, based on what you read in the applications and you saw weaknesses and other just more, because you do want to get some, I think, when we've talked about it before, you kind of want some common questions that every school has answered. So you get that sense and then you get that, okay, and now we need you to answer these specifics about your school, which are slightly different, but that we've got a baseline response out of a core questions from all, but that I don't know whether it's real. Yeah. I think the guidance should be in here. You're going to have questions about.
Yeah. So I just want to say there are categories.
Yeah.
There already are categories and every question is a how question. So you're asking for process, procedural thinking already, but I don't know where you would embed. Are you wanting a sample question in here?
No.
Oh, okay. Later.
Right. They would create it later.
Good. Yeah. Because these are pretty good. I mean, these procedural questions within each of these categories are very comprehensive.
But I think what the director is saying is.
I got, I understand what she's saying, but I didn't know where they were going to place those. So if those are later, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I don't want.
I just don't think that applicants should even.
Everything can change.
Right. Cut it.
I, I just don't think applicants need to have the questions in advance.
Yeah.
Because they're going to rehearse those just for the application.
Right.
That they, you know, that like was said that they may have a writer that, that helped them with the application. They may have somebody coaching them to be, to, to do these capacity interviews really well and to answer these questions really well.
Yeah, I agree.
Sure.
The only thing I want to make sure you know is that the capacity interviews are not required. So you can set them up. They're not required in law. The only thing that's required in law is the public input hearing. So you can structure this any way you want. It's not a requirement. It's, it was put in as a good idea. So I'm not saying you take it out, but you don't have any requirements. This is your deal.
So we could simply put, we could keep in here the rubric. And take out the questions so that they're not, and, and my recommendation, but my recommendation is they be changed anyway because they've been online and in applications for a long time. So that anyone can find these questions in particular, but that questions be created by charter school division, peer review team, whoever, and the schools have to answer them on the fly, but they know the base, which is already there. These are the categories that you're going to have to be prepared to respond to. Period.
Yes.
Yeah, it's in D.
Is that new language in balloon like last year?
No, there's, there's, on the far right side, there's questions on, in each of those categories that are already in there. They'd have to be taken out. At least on mine, there is.
Yeah, just mine too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. So we would take out, we would, this entire table, all these questions would go. And all we would have is this rubric and then the statement, the review team will ask applicant teams questions in areas that include, but are not limited to. And then we bullet these. And so this is a one page document essentially.
Yeah.
I love that so much.
Yeah. Yeah. Correct. We'll get the full, here was the question, here are, here were the responses. And these are our comments on how they responded. Yeah.
It's not letting, it's not letting me cut it, but I'll, I'll, I'll cut it after the fact and, and I, and I'll put cleaned up documents in the PEC's folder this afternoon.
Super. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that was easier than.
Yeah. Cool.
Okay. We are now on to item number two. Are you ready? Which is notice of intent to promulgate rule with draft procedural rule provided. So I'm going to turn this over to Julia because she can best describe. You know, we have talked about a number of times trying to create a better process so that it is clearer what our processes are going to be and that there's a a more cohesive, almost like hearing when we're, we're creating policy. So that this is the recommendation to be able to help create that process and also to create a, a better place for schools or anyone to be able to find the policies and, and documentation that needed. So Julia can change whatever I said and.
And I'm sorry, I can't. So Commissioner Armijo, I, I can either see you or Commissioner Correa. So that was, that'd be great. Thank you. So while there are several documents, there's only one that needs to launch this, if you want to do this process, that needs to launch this afternoon. That's because if we start this, this rulemaking process, we need to get out a notice. There is a procedure that you have to follow in the state rules act. So while there's a bunch of documents, there's going to be an opportunity for the public, the schools, for you guys to give input on these other documents. But I wanted to launch the concept with you. And if we want to launch the concept, just this notice of proposed rulemaking is the only document. I also want to say to you that some of these are things that the charter school division will want to have input on. And there's time for that as well. So this is just to give you a concept of what if it rolled out, this is how it would roll out. All the documents are in the PEC Google Drive and it's actually two through four action items. So we're going to, if we, when we finish this, we're going to have launched on to number five. A little bit of history, which I think is very consistent in my mind with what you all have been doing. I have been hearing you all trying to put some of these documents to bed to, and at the same time with our new director to allow her and her staff to put her stamp on every document. The, a group of attorneys came forward to me and said, who represent a lot of the charter schools, but possibly not all of them and said, we would really like you to have a formalized process. And in fact, they think that we have to do it. Now, some of the lawyers, I'll tell you, may think that we should be doing the rulemaking through PED and I'm happy to discuss that. My opinion is, is that PEC for particularly on procedural rules can do your own rulemaking. I don't want to go into that too much right now, but I do want to discuss that. So the way that the way that I've, after that conversation, thought about it in my head and then took it to the executive committee. And then I think that Director Chavez needs to fill in any way that she wants. Was, there's been a request to have everything, all of the forms ready by July 1. And that during the school year, you're not changing something unless there's an emergency. So you have an emergency option. But in general, that everything gets set by July 1 and stays that way and throughout that school year. So if we're going to implement this process, we need to do a review, make sure the director and her staff have an ability to put their stamp on every document and be done by this July 1. So this is going to be, you know, another review of all documents, but with an eye towards next year changing it. The next year and every year afterwards, I have put in it that at the September PEC meeting, the staff and commissioners will say, they'll just identify, I'm still not happy with this new school application. We need to look at it again. So we would get a list of those documents that you wanted to look at. That process is set up in the draft rule. There's going to be plenty of time for you all to look at that, get comment on it, talk about it, but it is attached. And that's the way that it's set up. A year one process to get every document listed and approved. And then a year two, three, four, five, where you would choose whichever documents you feel like reviewing. Maybe you want to review them all, but hopefully you won't. And what I heard from the, the attorneys, and actually Chair, I don't know if any of the attorneys are, are on and want to give. Okay. But we, we could see if you wanted to hear from any, no. Okay. So, and again, they're going to be able to participate in this rulemaking process. So they don't need to be here today because all we're looking at is they can be here today, but they don't have to be. And then in future years, anyone has the ability to kind of collect that list in September. And then the charter school division can figure out how you're going to review those documents and do it. But what the schools were saying, and I want to echo this as a new person working with you all, it's hard to find some of this stuff. And we're working hard to make it easier. So it would just be, once you finish the documents, well, once they're being drafted or reviewing the existing draft that we already have, they'd be in one section. And then below it, it'd be like, here's the list of what's approved. So I think I'm going to stop right this second and see if there's questions yet.
So ultimately Julia, what I'm hearing is, because it is some, I find it difficult sometimes to find a particular document.
Yes.
And so what I'm hearing you say is that there will be then a section that's just maybe, you know, PEC's policies, rules and procedures. They open that. They can do a search word if they need to, but otherwise things are going to be categorized
and listed.
Very simply and listed and hot. Man, that's going to be great.
And I'll tell you that, that what I went to go do when I got this, let me just tell you one more thing, which is the lawyers. So this has been on their mind for a long time. So much so that, that they actually submitted a, a letter, an opinion to the attorney general two years ago.
I can't hear Julia. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Can you guys go over there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Two years ago, saying that the PEC had to do this rulemaking. You had to have a process. It couldn't be as much of an ad hoc thing. I have heard from the executive committee, first the attorney general never acted on that letter. But I also heard from the, the executive committee that no one on the PEC ever knew that letter was submitted. I think there was a typo to the chair and I cannot answer what happened to the document that went to the attorney. However, they are at a level of saying, feel like they've been saying for years, please fix this, please fix this. And then you all have basically been saying the same thing. We need to get through these forms. This to me just formalizes the process.
And so this, and I, even before I was seated here on the commission, I know that there was the concern of whether or not we're in compliance with state rules act.
Right. That's what this is.
Great.
So now let me tell you what I did to research it. I, the state rules do not have lots of forms in them. They're just rules. The Supreme Court has a similar kind of thing. They have forms, they have processes, they have procedures. What they have done is done a procedure rule and then they follow it. Because they're Supreme Court, they don't have to follow the state rules act. So technically there's, is it, but I followed that same idea here. One procedure rule, only thing that we would propose in the state rules. And then you would operate by that and follow that process. So that's how, how I came up with the draft. There is one thing on the notice of proposed rulemaking that I do want to change, which is to be more explicit regarding your authority. And I can walk you through that. So.
Can I just comment something?
Yes.
Since we're at a pause to the next topic. Um, I think this is very proactive and this is something that, um, you know, well, we know how overdue it is, but it's something that I hope also isn't going to be a huge lift. But it might be for the charter school division to put all these, these documents in place. But I think this is going to also lay foundational work for us going forward. Things are not going to seem so willy nilly or ad hoc or subjective or whatever else. So I think this is really, really a good thing, a really good thing. And I love how it came about so collaboratively with the other attorneys. I think that's huge and it says a lot for the relationships growing in both, you know, but anyway, go ahead for the other space.
So let me explain a little bit and then I really do want to pause so that Director Chavez can jump in. So with whatever she would like to say to you guys. So the notice of PEC procedural rule, it's a required form. And I have tried to put into that document, which again is the only one that I need you to vote on this afternoon. If we're going to move forward with as much time as possible, which is the reason I wanted to do that. And I've tried to explain what we're doing, which is basically to say you already have drafts, you know, we're looking at the initial charter school application today. So you're, it's not like you're throwing everything out. And to say that we're moving forward and kind of describe it, I do want to add more language about your authority. And it, so it tries to explain to the public what we're doing and why we're doing it. They do want a draft rule. So if you wanted to make changes now to the draft rule, you could, but it's in draft. So also we could just attach it and then you all have input as well. That's document eight B. Eight C, and this does not have to be approved today, but this was just in my mind. This is, we collected a list of all of the documents. And I think there are 16 of them. I think eight of them are, someone, someone can tell me that you want this differently. You do not have to decide or vote on this today, but I think eight of them are pretty much already done. Everybody, they're working well. That's what I've been hearing. We would start with those. So as soon as the rule took effect, we would give the 30 day comment period and then you would vote on them because I don't think there's a lot of controversy on them. If I'm not right and number seven, you want to take longer, that's great. Pull it off that list, but I think there's eight. The next group are three documents that I believe the charter school division is working on right now. The initial application kit. The rubric for scoring, which I think is included in the initial application kit and the renewal application itself. So I believe that, that the director was bringing these documents to you right now and that they will be ready for kind of a round two. Then in my mind, there were documents that needed the most time. And there are, and that you guys are going to want to work on. I think these are the unfinished documents. Backwards planning to get everything up by July 1. I have put in a date of 4/10/22 so that for CSD to present you all with these documents. One is the contract template. One is the organizational framework. They've mentioned again today that they want to bring that to you. It seems onerous. There's work. They want to do it. They want to bring it to you. The rubrics, I've heard from them, they want to do it. Right now you don't have a financial framework. Do you want it just to deal with? Right now you don't have a financial framework. Do you want it just to deal with basically those documents? The only reason I put that in category three was to give the Charter Schools Division the most time to be able to work on those documents. And I've just put a no later than date. And then I've just shown in the chart. How you could roll it out. It's just the way I thought of it. You might think of it a very different way. That doesn't have to happen today. Obviously the C S D will largely kind of set this schedule. And it doesn't have to be decided today, but I just wanted to see what it would look like if we rolled it out. So this is proposed to be three. Chunks, the first one already done, everybody likes it. Second chunk, the documents that C S D is bringing to you right now and at the next meeting. And then the last chunk, which is a lot, which is there's more work to be done. Are there questions on that? Because I want to say one other thing. We're also talking today about a task force and a process for the academic performance framework. I envision that that is, that the whole intent of that project is not to have. A restrictive form that is used every single time. So I don't know that this, that even needs to be in this process. What I envisioned, but it could have a different outcome is kind of a series of different. Types of academic framework options that you all have vetted. But it could be option A, B, C, D, E, or F, and then a school might be able to come in with a G. So that that is not a document here that, that I think. Needs to happen within this framework. So it feels separate to me. So the organizational framework is in here, the financial framework is in here because I see no reason that. School A's organizational framework should be assessed any different than school B. Either your governance councils, meeting the Open Meetings Act or not, you know, it's not like I'm going to get a pass on that. So that's how I see this later process tying in with this process. I see them flowing together in a consistent way. The very last thing, which will be part of the. Calendar conversation. Is that. We are working, 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 and I know it's driving everybody crazy. Some schools are on one kind of contract, another's on another kind of contract. Karina and I've gone around and around and around. Okay, these schools that we're renewing, here's this, you know, it's all over the board. So if you're going to look at these contracts now. The schools, these nine schools that you just approved, I'd really like them on that doc, on a document. I don't want them on an old version. So you may look at. Cal, the calendar and when you would do the contract negotiations with them. So that's a little bit of a planning. When's the contract going to be ready so that we can have the contract negotiations? But again, you don't have to take that on today. I'm just trying to give you a little bit of a, of a. Process in my mind.
So, so. When we're looking at this and this timeframe, so this timeframe, we don't have to. Attach, so we can look at this timeframe at the January meeting, say, and alter dates on.
Absolutely. The only thing needed today is the notice of intent to do rulemaking.
So I guess my other question is, and I'm, I'm really okay with the, with the academic piece. Not being in this, that it's, it's more fluid. But my, then my question is where does it live? Because we're doing this because we want people to all be able to go here.
I think it'll live there when you're finished with it.
Will it live there? Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, and that's great. I just wanted to make sure it was still, you know, not hanging out there and people say, I can't find it.
Right, right.
Becca.
Um, with the academic framework, I know, you know, there's been contemplation of. A more lengthy discussion, more work sessions to really hone in and focus on that. I do wonder though, if there's a way that we can at least change the academic framework to. Allow for less specificity in. Exactly what the state is doing with what academics, so that as they change, like let's say, I mean. The, I, I do not wish for this and I do not hope for this, but let's say we don't get to. Changing the academic framework by the end of next year, like let's just say. And let's say there's a new governor at the end of next year. And a new governor comes, and then something changes, right? And now we're in the place where our performance framework, as is right now, once again, is, has these specific things in it. Based off of what the state is doing that we don't have control of. And now it's, we're, we're once again have these things in our performance framework and our contract that are just not valid at all. So kind of rolling back on these really specific initiatives. And still putting that we're going to be utilizing them, but not. You know, naming names so much.
Yeah, I, I think, well, two things would could happen. There could be in the sixty day, there could be a statutory change, which would help what we had to put in. You know, but I think if, if we comply with the law as it exists now, you're right. We may not have to parse out a lot of the real specifics, but the elements. Of the state accountability system somehow have to be reflected, but how specifically they're reflected, you're right. That was created because of the old system and I think there's ways that it can be cleaned up, that we comply with statute. But it doesn't, we're not looking at, oh my God, forty of those points or whatever. Yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think that's, that's really. Important to consider when that's, when that's being created. And I think.
Well, and this process. Is only relevant for these next nine schools. Everybody else already has an old contract. We're already figuring out an M O U process. Karina and I are already, you know, you've already authorized us to go talk to next year's renewing schools. We're already working on that. So we're going to have to suffer through that for a while, but you're right. And. That, that is a very relevant conversation for. April and in the rollout of the task force.
Yes.
So, and we can grapple with that. Okay, so. The. I, I could do one of two things. One is I could turn over to Karina so that she can comment on it now. Or I can tell you why I think you have authority to do a rule. Shall I finish and then we'll let Karina talk? Okay, so. I think that there is and will be. Just potentially differing legal opinions as to whether you have authority or not. So I have put a document in here with the, with the statutes on authority. Many statutes, but not yours. Gives express authority for rulemaking. The Charter School Act is silent. Legislators know how to bar you from doing rulemaking and it didn't happen. And it's silent. So my argument is that, well, first of all, I'm not sure if the. I have not heard if the P E D is. Opposing your ability to do this rule or not. I, I called, I called. The lawyer and spoke to the lawyer and I haven't heard. That they are objecting to it. Maybe Karina knows a difference. However, the statute is silent. The statute, which is, I posted them and put highlighted language for you. Under the statute at the bottom, you are required. To monitor in accordance with the requirements of the Charter School Act and the terms of the charter contract, the performance and legal compliance of charter schools. That's your job. You have to do that. And then you have to develop and maintain chartering policies and practices. Like you were saying, consistent with nationally recognized principles. So you're required to do that. So you have that obligation and the statute is silent as to what you do. You, the State Rules Act. Says that an administrative agency, an agency under the State Rules Act. Sorry, maybe I didn't drop that in here. Is a commission. So you are one of the entities and many commissions do their own rules. So the State Rules Act contemplates commissions following the State Rule Act. Then you come back to the question as to whether you can do it directly or it has to be done through P E D. There are two sections on that. One is nine, twenty four, eight. Which talks about the Secretary of the Public Education Department. And it says, the secretary may make and adopt such reasonable rules and procedures as may be necessary. To carry out the duties of the department and its divisions. You are not in the P E D department and you are not a division of the P E D. The very next section in law, twenty, nine, twenty four, nine. Says that you are administratively attached to the department. And the very last thing is if you go to the statute on administrative attachment. You exercise your functions independently of the department. So. Number one, you are required under law to do policies. Number two. Your statute is silent and does not ban you from doing state rules. Three, the State Rules Act contemplates that commissions can draft rules. Four. Yes, the P E D can do its own rules, but you are administratively attached and independent. Particularly for your own processes and your own procedures. At this moment, as we sit here right now, I don't see you drafting twenty rules. I actually see you drafting one rule and then a whole bunch of policies and procedures. So I don't, and it may come up later that you wanted to do another rule, you're, I'm not speaking to that. I'm just saying that in this situation, I think it's most appropriate to move forward with you doing your own rulemaking. Next month, I'll tell you what kind of reaction.
Where do you think we may get pushback if we get pushback from other council who represents schools all over?
Well, I already got an email from one council. One council that asked us to do it and then I got an email that said, you, you can't do it independently, you have to do it through P E D. We would have, the, the suggestion, I think where the pushback is going to be, not that there can't be a rule. But that this entity sitting here today is not the one to do it. It should be P E D. And we should ask them, here's a rule we'd like you to put through your process.
But it seems like what you were just saying relative to the administrative attachment and the freedom that comes with that. Would preclude that from being the case. And then the only, the only way, the only time I think I see. Counsel for some of our schools is really objecting and hopefully not objecting to the point where they want to litigate something. But is if, I mean, if we're working collaboratively, I don't think there's going to be that much, many issues.
It's also possible Commissioner, that when we submit this notice of intent to file a rule. The state registry actually tried to speak to them. I couldn't get anyone to call me back, but you've never done a rule yet. So when we submit it to them, they may say, who the heck are you? And, and point, show me the words to give you rulemaking authority. So that's where I don't know what's going to happen. Or how it's going to happen. I. I'm not sure what the lawyers are going to say, I, that it's P E D. There's been conversation over many years as to whether you had rulemaking authority or not. No one's tried to do a rule. So we're trying it now. I went and looked at it and this is what I think, I can tell you that that administrative attachment statute is strange and bizarre. But I can also tell you that many, many commissions do their own rules. And many commissions are expressly granted rulemaking authority. So you're in a funny little situation. That's my opinion that I'm giving you. And how, and that's, and actually that's exactly what I'd like to expand in the notice. I'd like to more expressly tell people why. You think through me, or you think through this notice that you have this ability. If someone pushes back and you make a decision to, to go separately or go through P E D, I think that that's possible. And I don't think you need to talk about that today. So that's, I just wanted to explain where we were.
Nine, nine, one, seven, if you, if you look on page three, is that very first highlighted under A one. The agency attached to the department for administrative purposes shall only exercise its functions independently of the department. And without approval or control of the department. And then if you go down below, it says the department. For which an agency is attached for administrative, only shall, and this is, this, there's three things. Or two things actually. There's nothing in there that says our rules have to go through the department. It, it gives us, under A one, we have the authority to exercise our functions. Independent and if agencies in general are. In a broader sense, allowed to make rules, then we are allowed to make rules and that's under A one. Under B, one and two, there's nothing there that expands the department's ability to do anything. It does say our budget requests must be submitted as we submit them. Without change. This is a thing that I made a year ago. I made this in May also. I understand we have the M O U, but. It's not necessary that we submit a budget. Through a negotiation process. Now, since C S D is not our department. Recommendations we make for C S D staffing and everything, I would assume, yes, you have to work with the department on that. But for our own needs, this specifically says we can set a budget within the dollars that are available. That the legislature has given us without approval of the department. And that, this goes back to the whole reason why the, the, the writ was filed and things like that, because it hadn't been followed. So.
And there's plenty more conversation on that later.
Right, right.
So. I will tell you though. That administrative attachment in New Mexico is handled all kinds of ways. And it's very odd. So I, I'm not in love with that statute.
Yeah.
So. I really need Karina to come back. So, um, all right, so.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Absolutely.
If we may, if we, so we've never made a rule before as a commission.
Right.
Are we going to open up some sort of can of worms if we make a rule? Is it going to ruffle anybody's feathers? Is it going to, I mean. Because I think it's going to give us some teeth finally, a little bit more, right? As, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm, this is all, I'm learning so much, so I'm just.
I think it formalizes things.
I, I will tell you. That I get great comfort out of the statute. And being able to say and point to the words that you are required to develop and maintain chartering policies and practices. And that, that's what this rule is about. So if you came to me and said, we're gonna do a rule. That every state charter has to wear, their kids all have to wear red, white and blue. I would be scrambling to find those great words that I could point to that gave you the ability to do that rule. But we're not talking about any other rules. So this one. I think is really in your wheelhouse and, and you've been doing it for years. You for years have required that these are your policies. These are not P E D policies. This is, this is a. This is, this is an initial charter school application that you have approved every time. So I don't really want to, I don't believe that we need to go further. What you're raising, I think, is where all kinds of alarm bells can start to go off for people. But again, that's a hypothetical or next time conversation. I believe, as Commissioner Creo just raised, that the lawyers have been trying to ask us to look at this for a while. I could see a clear path towards what you've been wanting to do. I've been hearing you say that. And then also, it's going to help the schools so that everybody knows what's going on once a year. And then you can, but the way that I've tried to draft it, it doesn't limit you. It just organizes you. The, the very last thing, even though it says July 1, I, I heard from Director Chavez that they would like to be able to look at the new school application, the renewal school application in the fall. So actually, there's a little bit of flexibility in there. So we've got two dates. But she's doing that and wanting that so that the schools that are affected have it in time. So that's very consistent with the concept.
And there was, in fact, we've, we've learned, a complaint filed to the AG's office.
I mentioned that when you.
Okay. So, you know, we've obviously never heard. It'll be in February when we do hear. So. But the, I, if it was, it was raised by one of the legal councils. So I don't think there, I don't see there's going to be significant pushback from those entities because they've raised the issue that, hey, you should be, this is the way you should be doing it. Because we want to be able to see it clearly. And I know even just the short time Julia's been on, she calls me all the time. It's like, where do I find this? And where do I get this? So that this really clearly creates that. It's like, I can find all of this information right here. And schools also know that, you know, during the year, because let's face it, because of, especially these last two years, because of a lot of what's going on, things have been changing, you know? So it's like, if we could offer some stability and say, oh, you know, at least I know that if I have to do this during this year, they're not changing the game in, in the middle of it. And, and let's be honest, I, I think if we look back, sometimes some of these reviews, we end up making changes. Like, really, did we have to change that? But because we were doing the review, it, it happens. So I think there's, there are certain things that are, should be always stable and only really need to change if, and we have the ability, the changes can happen. If there's a statutory change, we don't have to, you know, well, we know that we have to comply with the law. So I just, you know, as Glenna said, it's collaborative, it's proactive. And we've talked, you know, and this is through no fault of the new director, but there's been multiple directors or, you know, acting directors where we've always talked about, we need this calendar. We need, we need to know exactly where things, when things are going to happen. And this helps to, to do that for us. So I think it's, you know, it's a little burdensome to get it going. But I think in the long run, it's, it's going to create a, a greater process and a, and a more transparent process.
No, I love, I love this idea and I would echo everything that Ms. Boyd said. And as long as I think we continue to be a collaborative body with all of the different schools, there won't be people saying, no, you really don't have the right to do that. I'm taking you to task here. You know, so, and probably somewhere in our policies later, we're saying, when we want to adopt something new, we're discussing it in a work session. You know, one, please attend, because sometimes people don't pay attention to all of this. And there'll be ample time for comments from the schools before we actually enact something. So that they know they've had every opportunity to, to reach out to their council if they feel in some way we're overreaching. But I think this is a great start.
They wanted, they wanted a written comment period because a lot of the lawyers don't want to show up right now, you know? They would have been hanging out with us for the last three and a half hours and they want to be able to do it in writing. I can tell you some of, some of my dates have been like, this is getting in the weeds of when you looked at all the documents. But I probably want the comment period to end like 10 days before, before the meeting so that there can be a working session. You guys can talk about it and then you can, and then you can act on it. So I, I want to get past what we're still doing today, which is Bridget is still taking notes today. She's probably doing them right this second, so that you guys can vote on it this afternoon. I, I find that hard for my, to do my job. I feel like it's rushed. I feel like. So it's even backing up the process to be a little bit more. And then Commissioner Creo, you have said a couple of times that you want things touched a couple of times. So I'm thinking you would post the documents, touch it in a work session, give a 30-day comment period, touch it again, just to finalize it in the second work session and then vote on it. So that's making some sense to me. I don't want to push it for a three-month period. I mean, at some point, it's just exhaustive and exhausting. So what, are there more questions? And then I really wanted to see what Commissioner, what Director Chavez wants to say. Okay. Karina?
Thank you. I, I, I don't know why I'm struggling with this, maybe because it's new. And my first question is, where on NMAC does this belong? And also because I haven't heard any specific feedback from people at the PED about how long does it take to put forth rule? I think it's a long and drawn process. And so I get a little nervous with the timeline as Julia mentioned. It doesn't necessarily fall along the timelines that I envisioned, but I understand that we're talking about years out. Also, I feel like all these things exist. And if the issue is where do we find these, then let's clean up the website. That said, I'm all about creating more transparency for the schools, for their attorneys, for you all. And I do want to be able to support revisions to some of the key documents around our authorizing practices that are listed in Julia's list. I don't know why academic performance framework is missing from that. To me, it feels like all of the performance framework needs a complete reboot. I think that embedded currently within the organizational performance framework are financial performance framework indicators. My team is currently working on what we currently have in place to develop the rubrics. So some of this work, as Julia mentioned, is in progress. I just checked with Bridget, how long did it take us to, from start to, to finish to take the initial charter application and get it to a place where we could show it to you all and with real focused attention? And it took probably a month. So. I, I would like for some of these things to be done sooner than this timeline suggests. Or, I don't know, I guess at least in terms of, and I know that the, the time, the timeline is about, it's like how long, not how soon. And so I think that.
But we're not voting on the timeline today.
Right.
So this timeline is really, really flexible to give you that opportunity for that input. So that's, you know, and I think as Julia alluded to, when we're looking at the calendar, our calendar of meetings, the impact is, and that's why we don't need your input this afternoon on it. But sort of do, we're, we're going to have to build in, in all likelihood, a few more work sessions into the calendar or at least column. I mean, we can, we can always add them in. We've got the basic calendar. But in order to get this work done, it's going to require some additional time this year to be able to get ourselves to that good place. So that we may need some additional work sessions. That's where, that's why we're not voting on this timeline this afternoon so that you can have your input and then we can look and say, okay, we need another day for, of work session in February. Because we need to work on this. And because if you think something needs to be looked at sooner rather than later, then fine. Let's put that on the work session and add some time to it so that we can accommodate that. So we're really, I think, really flexible with that. Steve?
I love that idea. I, I think it's a good idea when we get to the calendar portion to build in each month a placeholder. To have, and maybe it's the, you know, the second Wednesday or whatever it is. It's a placeholder for a work session. We don't have to use it, but you know, things come up that we have to address.
Right.
And, yeah.
No, that's a really good idea. So, you know, we can do that.
Yeah, I just want to comment, you know, I understand what Karina is saying about the components of, of finding things. I think actually of the items in the timeline, we could actually just put performance frameworks. And that would include the organizational and the academic and the financial. And just make it the performance framework.
Well, because I, I agree. I think you're going to have something up in academic. It's just going to look different and be more optional than organizational and financial.
Right, right. And it's going to be, those are, that, the academic, I believe, is going to take a little longer than the organizational and the.
And it's a completely different process. I'm just saying, it didn't have to modify anything you had for conversation. I see them as compatible. That's more what I was trying to say.
Okay, sure.
So I, I had hard copies made of the existing contract template and the performance framework and handed them out here. I can put them, the links to where they are on our webpage, on the PEC's webpages, actually. And I know that if you're not used to navigating around the PED's website, it could be difficult to find things. That's why I think that a lot of the argument I'm hearing around why this is needed is where do you find things? And, and we have the website and these things exist on the website. And I think that maybe we need to reorganize the website so that you can find them better if, if that's one of the concerns.
Well, I, I agree that would happen, that, that that's a, and actually there is a forms page, so it is kind of a revamp. I just want to say one more thing, which is these documents that Karina has passed out, at least on my calendar, she would work on them to bring them to you no later than April. Because these are in the last group. And I think there is a lot of work to be done on that. So just in my proposal, I just proposed to give CSD, but to bring it to you whenever you want, but from now until at least April. So I'm not trying to, this is one of the ones that I'm like, gosh, there's a lot of conversation. I actually have a, I want to get my head around it too. I, there's a lot in that contract that I just feel like should be somewhere else.
Right. And this isn't a reflection. And I, I just want to make this absolutely clear. This is not a reflection that there's some lack of performance on the charter school division, that this is why we're doing it. It's not a reflection of that. But it is a reflection because it has been, you know, obviously, it's been a, a concern raised by schools and entities that represent schools. To the point that there's a complaint filed, you know, to the AG's office. As an independent commission, we're simply, I think, trying to exercise the responsibility we have to create the, the way our processes are formulated. So that this goes above, this goes beyond when none of us are here. And that's the process. So it doesn't matter, you know, this commission decided that this is the way they were going to do it. And, you know, the charter school division was making a direction that this is the way, they would sort of like things done. And the commission said, okay, we've got this solidified that this is the process as a commission that's going to go forward. And it, like I said, I think we're exercising our responsibility as that independent commission to do this as other bodies do. And it's not a reflection that there's, you know, that, that there's been any missteps, but there have certainly been expressed concerns. And I think, you know, the, the opportunity for us to be as open about input that we're receiving and how we receive from the schools, it's set up in this process and it simply makes it clearer for everyone.
Yeah. I, I see it strictly as procedural. This is procedural. You know, this is something that's going to standardize this and give us more transparency. And it's something, like I said before, it was overdue. This is just a, this is just one step in, in a stabilization piece. So.
No, I agree. Should we move, so this is going to come up if we want to discuss it more on the actual agenda later today. Well, it looks like this might be a late night, huh? Should I make dinner plans to be here?
I'm not going long tonight, so.
There you go. But I mean, I would almost suggest we move on to what's next on the work session.
Well, I don't know whether we've heard everything from the director. So I just want to make sure, but otherwise, yeah, but I, I don't, and.
So I, I, I feel like I just saw the legal standing and Julia, if you sent it to me before, the legal argument for why PEC would promulgate its own rules. I hadn't really looked at that. I'm wondering if you sent it to Aaron previously?
Well, it's.
I know that it was uploaded in the materials.
I get that, but it, it's embedded, there's a section of the notice that requires where you state the authority. And so it was, it's, it's been in there.
I, I'm just saying I hadn't seen it before and I don't know if it was shared with Aaron, that particular document. And you, and I'm not saying you didn't send it to me. I just have a lot coming at me.
Yeah. I just stated it. I mean, I just pulled the statutes and highlighted it for this conversation. I have not sent that to Aaron.
Okay, so I just did. And so the point I want to make is that I haven't had a legal analysis on the PED's side. And, and I know that this feels a little bit like this, you know, the, the separation between PED and PEC, which was a theme that I walked into when I, when I first arrived and I felt like we were making steps to be more collaborative. And maybe this doesn't stop that, but I just, I feel like I don't have a PED legal stance on it yet. Certainly the rule process itself too, like how that would come about. So I, I just, I have questions. And I'm, I'm sorry that I don't have a, a stronger stance in terms of support for it. It feels like more, more work, more, you know, because I'll probably have to collaborate with the folks at PED that, that establishes rules and arrange all that. And, and then, and then what does it do in terms of like? I'm not sure exactly. Yeah. I just want to say that I feel uncertain. I understand this notion of wanting to standardize things. And then I look at the PEC's webpage and I see the amendment request. and I see the amendment request process forms and policies and processes. And I guess my question is, why is that not enough?
So, a, a couple of things. One is if we do this process, every state agency that does rulemaking follows the exact same process. P E D does it, N M E D does it.
Yes, and I, I've been through those.
So we would, we're just following the process. So, we wouldn't ask P E D to do anything about this rulemaking process. We would do it.
Except I, I, well, maybe, but I, I, I think earlier I heard you say that it was unclear exactly what route to go, because as an entity, P E C has not yet established rule. And so it may have to go through our rulemaking, our policy office, who usually staffs that work.
Right. Not the, the, I'm suggesting that the P E C do its own rulemaking right now. In sixty days, if the world blows up and everyone has convinces this commission that they have to do it a different way, then you're correct. However, right now, today, given the legal outline that I've given, I believe the P E C can approve a notice of intent to, to, can start the rulemaking process. That's my proposal. So that would not require P E D's input at all, or the P E D process. This commission would follow the same process that's outlined in the State, State Records Act to do one rule. Um, it's up to the state registry where that would go in N M A. They organize N M A. So, that's what you do, is you send them a notice of intent to promulgate rule, and they say to themselves, where are we gonna put it? So I also don't think that, that, I think that that's part of the rulemaking process, and we're gonna have that happen. Part of the notice of intent to do rulemaking is to tell people they can give us input. And a lot of that input may or may not be, you can't even do this. I, I actually don't know who can challenge us, but anyway, somebody could maybe, and I, we're gonna have to see how that process goes, so, but I just wanna do one thing now, this afternoon, which is to launch the notice in the formal way and start the process. We cannot take any action under the rule until it's been promulgated. So we can't do anything, I think, until like January, February, given the timing that we have to take. So, everything else that I've proposed in terms of the schedule and all that, we can't even do any of that until the rule is approved, and then we follow the rule. It's just a procedural rule, as Commissioner Boyd has said. So, and I guess the reason to do it um, is, one, we were clearly asked to do this in a more formal way. There's been a lot, and they say, and the reason for rules is to give people an opportunity to participate and give you input. Without this rule, in previous years, you've taken action on a Thursday, you've talked about it on a Thursday and adopted it on a Friday. What the lawyers were saying to me is there was no time for public input. So, this procedural rule is gonna get public input, and then it, it's a whole process rule that requires the same public input.
I'll just say this, I'm sorry.
No, hold on, Becca's.
Sorry, yes.
Got it.
Um, so I remember very distinctly pretty well that first meeting of this year, and how especially as new commissioners, like we, we got information like a couple of days before the meeting, or even the night before the meeting, then we had to talk about it the next day, and then we had to vote on it the next day after that. And I was just like, what? You know, like as a commissioner to make decisions, like that wasn't a really great process. Now, if I take a step back, that's, that's not including the public being able to give that kind of, to follow that same process is, you know, a little bonker. So I think for me, this definitely follows my values that I have had in coming into the commission of giving longer periods of time for that comment and for thoughtfulness and, um, the work to happen in between the initial process and the next one. Um, I would hope, I, 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 I don't think I would be as supportive of this if it was going to put a huge additional burden on the P E D Policy Bureau. Um, because they are doing their own role, like they have their own stuff that they're working on that's directed by the secretary and the deputy secretaries, and they, they're about to start session, like, I mean, they're gonna have a lot. So, I'm really supportive of this, knowing like that it's gonna be our attorney that's gonna be handling this process. Um, I also do think, like, I, I, I do wanna say, Karina, the one thing I'll say, cuz I, I, I empathize with how you're feeling of like, wait, hold on, like, what does this mean? And I have, like, especially not knowing, like, not getting legal advice from P E D yet, is it, I, I would be concerned too. So, um, I think I'm, you know, I'll support this today because you'll still get thirty days to, to talk to legal and be able to, them to be able to provide some feedback to us about what they think about it. Like, they don't need to decide today how exactly they feel about this. If they wanna give comment on it, or they wanna support or not support it, I think that they have plenty of time to kinda look at it and see what they think, um, and how they feel about it. But I do think, I, I think this is the right way to go as far as, um, doing the right thing by the public and by our schools. Um, and I think the first year in particular is gonna be the hardest to kinda like do all this to get it set. And then I'm hoping that ideally, one thing that I've loved that, um, you've talked about Director Chavez is the, the things that you worked on in New York have longevity, right? They're not based off of, um, like the, the whims of whoever's there can't, doesn't really like affect the, the stability of a lot of the things that you've set in place before. And I feel like this is kind of along those same lines of being able to start putting into place things that are going to create longevity in documents, longevity in the, especially the big documents. So, that's what I kinda think, and I understand the nervousness. But I definitely don't see it as like separating from the P E D. I think it's still a massive collaboration, actually, in order to do this. It's like the ultimate collaboration. But I think as a commission, it make, it holds us accountable as a commission to do right by the public.
Commissioner Corio first.
Um, I would agree with everything that Rebecca said. The, um, it's very difficult for all of our schools, as we know, the way we typically have a work session on a Thursday and a meeting on a Friday. The expectation that they're just gonna sit there with us on in the background all day Thursday, um, waiting for their item to come up, and really not even having a chance, except maybe by Zoom, really quickly to have any comment on that. So, I mean, I think that this really, um, codifies, if you will, eventually procedures by which we're being much more inclusive of our school leaders, of the public, um, our constituents, you know? Um, and we have, there's gonna be months, I believe, as Julia said, where this is going through the state registry. Is that what you said? I mean, I don't even know what all those people do. But, um, yeah, where all of this has to go through all of these other steps. And if there, and there could be concerns that come back to us that we can address maybe in September or whatever, but there's gonna be plenty of time um, for that. I think this really just makes things easier and clearer ultimately. And as long as we continue, I mean, I said this before, to be a collaborative body with the councils of the schools, uh, this is, I think this is just a great move to be able to get things done. And when we do make decisions on, uh, policies and procedures, they're gonna already be embraced uh, by those people that we're collaborating with.
And, and I agree. This isn't a, a means of separation. I mean, there is a separation between us and, cuz we are administratively tied, but we are in, we are an independently elected commission. So that, and it's not, um, I don't see this as us trying to puff up and say, okay, we're gonna, we're trying to exercise our authority, and we're gonna show you that we can do this. I, I don't see it as that kind of move. I see it as that, once again, without beating the term collaborative, with that collaborative process. But, and I'm trying not to turn this into, uh, an us versus them. But I appreciate the thought that may come from P E D. But the bottom line is, they can, they can provide that comment, but we take our legal guidance from our attorney, and the commissioner just, you know, so, and I didn't let you go cuz I thought you were still talking to Bridget, so sorry.
That's okay. Um, so I, I totally hear Commissioner Burke, Commissioner Corio about wanting to increase public input into whatever it is that the P E C puts forth as policies or procedures or whatever. I totally agree, and I think it's been madness. I agree that we talk about something on a Thursday and then have to pump out a final version on, on Friday. So, I just, I, I agree with that. I just question why we have to put this process into place in order for that to happen. Um, you all know that I was at the P E D ten years ago and have come back to see so many more documents, requirements, bureaucratic processes that take a long time. And I am wondering, I'm asking myself, how is this gonna feed into that? I don't know, um, except that it's something new that now is gonna take time and effort for people to figure out. Um, and then what happens when that rule needs to change, or one of the documents need to change? Um, I don't know. Um, I, I feel like we have a P E C webpage with all these things handy, and if we need to clean it up, let's clean it up. Um, if we need to make it more user-friendly, then let's do that. If we wanna set an internal goal to have a month in between so we can get input, let's do that. I just, I'm not sure why this is necessary. And because it's different in terms of, um, the secretary putting out the rules, and we can do that collaboratively, absolutely. Um, I don't know what P E C putting out a rule actually will mean. What will, and why it's necessary. Uh, so I'll say, this is what I'll say, one thing, Karina, is you're right if you got to make all the decisions, right? Like, if you were able to set the agendas, you could align that, right? Like, you could follow this procedure, you could do it. But honestly, no, nothing about our current executive committee that's on, but it really is at the whim of the executive committee to do whatever they want with the agenda, right? So, it with, in, in absence of a formal rule that, that allows this procedure to start taking place, we're at the whim of whoever is, you're at the whim of whoever's on executive committee, and whenever they're putting things on the agenda, right? I mean, it wasn't ever C S D that decided an agenda before that said, hey, you know, do this on Thursday, do this on Friday. That was the P E C that did that. You know, P E C sets the agendas. Of course, the C S D recommends it, right? They recommend, and, and you're always advising, and P E C's listening. But at the end of the day, the C S D director, you can have all the, you know, you, you can have the perfect website, you can have the perfect everything, which I don't, you know, it's not bad, it's not bad now. And I don't think, none of this is to say anything that is already happening is bad, but it does leave it to the whim of the commission and whoever's on the commission, whoever's on the executive committee, and then especially who's at the chair, to decide exactly how much time's given for public comment, how much time is given between hearing things, how much time is given between a, a procedure getting put in place? How much, you know, if, um, if they wanna bring up the performance framework, right? Let's put that on the agenda. It's, it's really, I think this actually supports you more for you to know, this is what the P E C does, and I don't have to worry about the whim of what the commissioners are gonna do and decide. And I think it's gonna give more stability for you in the long run as well. That's kinda how I see it. That's, that's like how I envisioned it. That's, that was like my support behind it, was thinking that way about it.
I think, sure, that this makes us more efficient. Eventually, I think it ends up, and I, I get where you're sitting from, uh, or, or coming from. I think this ends up making us more efficient. Um, and as, uh, Glenna said earlier, not doing things willy-nilly, um, and, and being haphazard in the way we do things. And also, you know, the secretary is a political position, and that can change not only every four years, it could change every year. You know, who knows what, what's going on in Dr. Steinhaus's life, where he may think, oh my gosh, I'm gonna have to move on because of family issues and, you know, move to North Carolina all of a sudden. And now there's someone else who might wanna have a different way, um, to do things. Um, I would also suggest that we, I don't see much of hands up there on Zoom, but that if we wanna have further discussion, we can do that when it's time to vote on this, only because we still have a number of work session items to get through. And I know because I've received emails that there are people that want us to start on the agenda.
You know, it's been six cabinet secretaries. Commissioner Robbins and I were trying to, you know, use our fingers and say, how many cabinet secretaries?
Yeah, I, I've been on for, I've been on since seventeen, so I've been on a little over four years and five cabinet secretaries. The, the, the thing that this is doing, and I think we have to remember this, all it's doing is it's taking our rules and procedure, P E C rules and procedures, and formalizing it. The P E D has no role or in what our rules and procedures are. Since our administrative folks support us, absolutely, we need to listen to what, if we change a rule or procedure, what the impact is going to be on that staff. And I think we've been very good, and I don't think we would ever say, hey, let's do this, and you guys have to figure out how to get it done in, you know, twenty-four or forty-eight hours. That's never happened, and I don't think that's a, a responsible thing to do. Nothing in this rule is restricting or making things more onerous. It's just formalizing, which is what we've had charter school attorneys ask us to do. And it is an appropriate thing as an independent body that we are trying to be responsive to our constituents.
Yeah, brings us more into compliance, I think.
Could I just say one thing to what you were saying? In the work session, on that notice document, I just need to, I, I'm, I know that I want to expand the legal argument section, but if you objected to something in the language of that document, um, that's gonna launch the process, I just needed to know that in the work session. If you've read it and, and it reads okay, then we can have a conversation as to whether you wanna do it or not. It's just, I've pulled the form, I populated it, and I just, you guys are gonna need to authorize the chair to submit that document. And you can authorize the chair to submit the document, and then we can complete that language. But I just wanted during the working session to give you, and I had to give you some background, and I know that this is new to Commissioner, Director Chavez, so she, she needed and could continue to give her comment, but it was important to me on that as well.
Right. I mean, as, as Glenna pointed out, this is, the rule is, is pretty succinct in the fact that all it is, is outlining our procedure. So that the likelihood that we would have to change it, it's unlikely. And the bottom line is, as Becca pointed out, it's, it doesn't require P E D policy groups. So even if we had to change it, that's on us, and that's on our attorney, and we'd have to make those changes. So, but it's unlikely because we haven't, we're not setting up, if you, if, you know, if you look at the, that timeline and say there's fifteen items on it, we're not setting up fifteen separate rules. We're setting up just the rule that this is the procedure we're gonna take, we're going to take on. And it establishes how we're, we're going to be responsive about hearing input regarding the, um, the policies and procedures that we're creating. So, and it, it creates, once again, that consistency. So I don't, um, I don't see where it, you know, it becomes burdensome. And if it does, that's on us. it, you know, it becomes burdensome, and if it does, that's on us. We're not asking anyone from the Charter School Division to really do anything regarding this, this rulemaking process. That's Julia's taking, unless just the outside chance. If, you know, somehow it said, you know, we got that feedback that said, and I don't see why we would, but if we got that feedback, not from public comment, but from an entity that says, you can't do that, we'd then have to rethink what we're doing. That's the bottom line, but let's, let's not try to go there. Let's try to be on the positive side and say, this is, you know, Julia's done the homework. She firmly believes, let's take her guidance, and, um, we'll deal with the what-if if it comes up. You know?
So all I need today is that you don't want to change any of the language on the notice of intent. It's document eight A.
I think, I think the, the language, I've, I've read through it, it looks fine. I, I can't. It, it's not the rules and procedures, it's just announcing that we're proposing a rule.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all it's doing.
Yeah. Okay.
Two, three, and four, we just did.
Yeah. Bet you didn't know how fast we were going. Okay.
So those of you on Zoom, you're not, you heard what just happened, right? We're just gonna move on and let Julia do the language and then vote later? Cool, alright.
We have the language for the rule.
Okay.
You gave it to us.
Yeah. So we are now on to, before, we are on to the calendar review for two thousand and twenty-two, which I think, um, um, if I heard correctly, there was that suggestion to, to just put the placeholder in for that, for Wednesday, prior to our meetings. Prior to our work session, the Wednesday, we've already calendared in the Thursday before our meetings for a work session. If I heard you correctly, Steve, you said, put a, put the Wednesday before as well as a placeholder for a work session.
It wasn't necessarily the Wednesday before the current scheduled work session, it was like even maybe earlier in the month.
I've got you.
Just to have something that was a placeholder.
Okay. Well, and I think we'd need some, when we get to that, I, we'd need some input from commissioners to see in terms of their personal calendars. Does it work better to calendar the Wednesday before every, or another Wednesday? I, I mean, it's less, it's, it's less impactful to me, because, you know.
Good for you.
Yeah. No, it's, you know.
So I would say for me, I know. So for me, it's definitely easier to do it not all in a row. That three days in a row is very difficult to take off, like this week is very difficult. So if it can be any other time besides, we're in the same week right before, I think it would be better for me, so.
And it doesn't, it doesn't even have to be a Wednesday. You know, so it could be a Thursday or, or whatever. So I think we need that input from commissioners. What day of the week would be better for a work session? An additional placeholder day, and is even in terms of the first or second week, if it, you know, what works for most commissioners best?
For me, I would say a Tuesday or Wednesday the week prior to the formal meeting. So if, if a formal meeting's gonna be Thursday, Friday, I don't know, whatever, that the week prior to that, on a Tuesday, Wednesday, that would, for me, that would be great.
Okay. Commissioner Armijo?
Um, Wednesdays would work best for me. Not the second week of the month works good for me, so. So the week prior to our meetings does not work for me, usually.
Even before that, that's fine with me.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So for first, first Wednesday works pretty decent.
First Wednesday's great.
For, for me, I guess, uh, the first Wednesday is whenever we have NIPSE meetings. Thursday, uh, for the benefits advisory and the, uh, regular scheduled meeting. So, um, typically now we're doing them in person or via Zoom either, but they're usually in the afternoon about two PM. So just as a, as an idea of what that usually looks like.
Okay, so let me ask you, um, are you normally, because I know sometimes it changes. Are you meeting regu- more regularly in Albuquerque or up here in Santa Fe?
They have recently been scheduling them in Albuquerque.
In Albuquerque, yeah.
Um, but they also have kept it hybrid, so. Uh, Zoom, you know, the last few ones I've done Zoom, I don't think we have a meeting in January, uh, or yeah, we don't usually have a meeting in Jan-
January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all days of the week are equally bad for me.
I'm sorry.
All days of the week are equally bad for me.
Thanks for your flexibility.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Can I, uh, can I ask what, uh, I missed our last meeting, so, I mean, what, what is this placeholder for?
It's, um, as we're looking to, um, look at our policies and processes and the review of, um, if you look at that, um, timeline and the calendar that was put in with, so we're gonna have to spend potential, potentially time to look at those so that they're clean when they go, when we're voting on them.
I see.
We could, what, we would hopefully keep this hybrid.
Yeah.
For that, so that for folks that, you know, we were, we're trying to make it as flexible as possible, so I would certainly anticipate that they would, that these would still be hybrid meetings, so that you'd be able to participate, whether you could travel here to Santa Fe or, or not. You know, we could even meet in Albuquerque.
Yeah.
And then our ECs. Because everyone, you know.
It would be okay if it were like a half-day meeting and not a full day.
Live, right there.
Also, Chair, I think.
And say, okay. Yeah.
For this process, you only need March, April, May, and you only need it in the period that we're working on the documents. We want to finish the documents by July one, so you don't need a new placeholder all throughout the year.
Right, right, right.
And you're not gonna start until the rules in place.
Yeah, just basic changes in Google.
So we wouldn't be starting until probably March. The rules are in place, and, you know, we're putting the placeholder in for if we need it. So we're not saying we're absolutely gonna do this, because we're trying, honestly, no offense to anyone, we're trying not to have to do this, you know, it's not. But, um, just so that folks would be able to have at least that, um, in the back of their minds, I have the possibility that I may have a work session, and we would certainly try the best of our ability to give the month's notice. So that folks would know, we're not gonna have a meeting or we have to have a meeting, and I think we'll have a clearer idea once we get the input from the director as to how she recommends this review, we'll have a better idea of what we need to look at.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll, I'll do my best to participate when, it, whenever most people can be there.
Okay, thanks. So I think at this point in time, we're looking at the first Wednesday of the month. For March, April, May, June. Okay. So we're moving off of the calendar now. Okay, we've moved off the calendar. I got you. And I'm only saying it because we're on to you on the work session for the survey.
Lana, I can make the changes.
Okay, did you get the July eighteenth? If we moved July fourth, eleventh? I'll just share it with you. Changes, it's so stupid.
What are we talking about?
Do it. Okay, here we go. The school surveys, so, um, did you share the PowerPoint with everybody or no?
No.
Okay, so the only piece of the Charter School Survey that went out.
Really, the, um, the Charter School Division created a Charter Leader Survey, and, um, there were six, so I don't have any of my data in front of me, but the only section, I, I don't even know how many participants. I don't have any of my data in front of me. Okay, so it's, everybody has a copy of that then?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah. Everybody has a copy of that?
It's in the working session documents.
Okay, super. So really, the only section of the survey that, um, that I am, um, paying attention to, um, at this time is the academic performance framework section, and looking at the results and the, um, the responses of charter leaders pertaining to that section, because we are formulating a working task force comprised of members and participants from that survey to put forth and revise the academic performance frameworks based on the feedback provided within that survey. And based on the feedback provided to us from the input, um, periods that we gave to schools, if you recall, when we had those, those blocks of time for charter leaders to provide input. So, um, myself, Karina, Bridget, um, have been meeting to talk about moving this forward and looking at different facilitators to work with the task force to hopefully have our first meeting in January with the task force. So that's where it stands right now. It's still in its beginning steps. But it would be nice to have another commissioner on the task force other than myself.
Why, no, I saw I wanted to be on.
Yeah, okay, good.
And I, I believe Commissioner Carrillo actually said.
A moment by an emergent work thing. So you were talking about the performance framework task.
Academic performance.
Yes, please. I would like to be a part of that.
Yeah.
Great. I think, given that, and then we also have Charter School Division staff and possibly um, at least ten charter school representatives, that's probably gonna be a good number.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm hoping that, um, Ms. Saint-Ange, Ange, um, because I tried to recruit her yesterday.
I know Margarita Porter's interested. Yeah, and the, the, I mean, what I'm really hoping to see is, um, an academic framework that's relevant to our schools and our communities, because right now, we're trying to fit every school in one box.
Right.
It's that one-size-fits-all type of model, and so there, we know we have schools that have twenty-two-year-old students, we know we have schools that have a high population of special education students, we have a school that serves deaf students. So how do they fit into our current performance framework, right? So if it involves having three different frameworks for different types of schools, that's what it's involving. So, um, so we, we look to, to make something that's more meaningful for, for the different types of charter schools.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I, I think, you know, as, as Becca said before, you know, trying to get it away from that specifics, but, you know, I, I was fascinated, a couple of the NACSA workshops that I sat in on, and how many of the state authorizers, or how many of the authorizers, because I don't know what they were, created these frameworks, and how many schools still opted for the, you know, the, the traditional one, and I think that's also because, you know, the, the, the new and the unknown sometimes is, uh, so I think we have to, um, yeah, but it'll, I'll, I'm just curious to see how many schools after all of this, um, really want to, to change, but I, uh, um, I'm all in favor of um, everyone doesn't fit into the box.
Yeah.
You know, that's, um, that, there's many different ways a student and a school can show their excellence.
Right. Great.
Okay.
Done.
Thanks.
Wow.
Okay. We are on to the last item of our work session, and that's legislative priorities. So I, I think during this week, I think we've all kind of identified at least two of those items that we are, are looking to hopefully support. And, um, that's the teacher pay raises. I don't think anyone's gonna say, no, don't pay them, we want to pay them less. Um, so I think, and that certainly has been identified, um, as a legislative priority by, um, LFC, LESC. So I don't know if anyone wants to have any discussion on that.
Well, the, the only thing I would add is every agency is probably, you know, pushing the same thing. You know, when I was a CFO, I had accountants that were working two thousand hours a year. They had to work two thousand hours a year, not fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventy, two thousand hours a year. Had, for certain positions, they, I required they have a master's degree, and they were making barely forty thousand a year, working that many hours. And yes, if they had to work extra hours, they got overtime in some cases, but you know, managers and, and directors, they don't, they don't get any of that either, and so, you know, we just have to be very careful when we're looking at what has happened over the last five years in terms of teacher raises. You know, taking it up to fifty, sixty, seventy. That really puts other state workers, government workers uh, competing for those dollars, and while I want to encourage, I think what some schools have done around the country, they've encouraged teachers to move up to that level two, level three, rather than just saying, well, we're gonna take a level one with a bachelor's degree and no experience, and we're gonna pay him fifty thousand dollars a year coming right out of school, when they don't have any demonstrated experience or capability. Some school districts around the country, what they've done is they said, we're gonna give you five years to get your master's degree, and we will pay you. We will pay the tuition for that. I think that is an incentive also, because you're actually making a, an investment in those teachers at that time, rather than just saying, we're gonna throw a bunch of money at you, because as soon as, you know, the legislature does this, I'll guarantee you, private industry is gonna be forced to do the same thing to attract and retain their people and, and attract people into, because industry has educational opportunities that they have. And so we get into this spiral of, where, where does it stop? So encourage them to move up the ladder, I think is great. I think we have to be, you know, my, my caution is very, be very cautious about moving it up so much so rapidly, thinking that that's gonna solve the problem, whereas encouraging teachers to get higher certifications and providing an economic means to do that, rather than just automatically taking first-year teachers up so high. I, and I, and, and personally, I think, you know, I've talked with a lot of teachers, you know, merit, merit raises and merit recognition. I know there can be a lot of, uh, subjective applying of that, but what, what we do is we disincentivize certain individuals, and everybody just gets an across-the-board raise of the same amount, and you know, that, that's, that's my opinion.
So as I understand it, this, and just, so yes or no answer, so as I understand it, the seven percent is, um, simply for teachers, EAs, or is it for everybody working in public schools?
Number one, teachers, teachers, EAs.
So the, the challenge with that sometimes, well, there's the challenge, first off, yes, I want everybody that's working in public ed, uh, in public schools to get seven percent, that means everyone, secretaries, EAs, administrators, but the challenge- But the challenge is when you make it a blanket seven, there are a number of positions, especially when I can speak from Santa Fe. They're already at competitive. Rates based on their position, whether size of school, number of kids, things like that. And so the local school boards are the ones that I think need to have also in whatever proposal there is. Leeway on how that money is distributed, because there are frequently positions and it's usually. EAs, nurses, and secretaries that are so far below where they should be that they deserve maybe that whole seven and. You know, principal, you know, at a high school with eleven hundred doesn't necessarily deserve that and. Well, they deserve it, they're working hard, but they don't necess based on a salary schedule, they don't necessarily warrant that amount of an increase. So and that's for the the bean counters and educate attorneys to write into the law. The biggest challenge I have with all of this, and we can all remember two years ago, they did a substantial. Well, not substantial enough, but increased from forty to forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five, and the minute COVID hit, they took it all away. So we live in a state that, I believe, and this this can be on the record a million times in caps. I believe this state does not value public ed nor fund it as well, and we're always the first people where they're going to cut our money from. Because we are naturally, and this is the way it is in every state of the union, public ed is the largest part of the state budget in every state. But in our state, when we need to make a cut, we just look at the line item and say, what's the biggest, let's just take from there. And it's always the public schools that end up getting, you know, the the wrong, the. Wrong side of the deal, there's a phrase I was going to use, which I shouldn't, and um. So anything that has to do with increases, I think there needs to be language to hold education harmless. Should there be changes in. State income fluctuations, because we know oil and gas, while we're riding high now, it's going to go down again. And if any of those people had any wherewithal, they'd be investing in clean energy, because sooner or later. There is going to be, it just is, a lot less production of oil and gas. So as good business people, it would behoove them to move some of their dollars to where the growth is going to be. But I don't, and I know I speak disparagingly about New Mexico sometimes, but I really don't think that people in the house across the street have that kind of foresight. So the whole education harmless to me is critical to any raises that might be. Allocated. And that's what I have to say regarding this specific legislative priority.
So and I'm going to ask KT, because he might be able to help me out with this one, and part of the discussion, when you were talking about EAs and others. Part of the discussion that I heard about the. Some of the pitfalls of pay raises is with the health insurance, there's the tiered health insurance. So that as an example, there was a a strike in cruises of the bus drivers. Because they, yes, they received a. A pay increase, but by that pay increase, they went in, even if it was like, some of them, it was literally like a five-dollar pay increase. But they went to the next tier on the health insurance, so what ended up happening was they had their pay in. To the health insurance was more, so they ended up making less. So that what looked like a reasonable pay increase ended up being a pay decrease. So that when we were talking the pay increase, they all, there also needs to be legislation. That fixes the that tiered system for the health insurance buy-in. And I don't know, KT, if there's been any discussion from NIPSE on that.
We have not had a discussion about that. From what I was looking at, as far as our premiums, like I have it pulled up on my computer right now. It it's not based off of. Off of the wages, what it says here is it's sharing ba, it's a sharing based on salary. Okay, yeah, yeah, yep, so what they have here is if it's twenty-five thousand and over. The. Cost sharing is forty percent employee and sixty percent employer, so anybody making over twenty-five thousand. So I I think the way that they set it up really has been, it actually goes down if it's less than that twenty-five thousand. So if if it's twenty to twenty-four ninety-nine, the employee only contributes thirty-five percent. And keeps going down from there, so I'm not exactly sure, I get what you mean about the bus drivers. They may be in one of those those specific cha tier changes, but I'm not not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, and it and it obviously varies from school district to school district, but it it is incredibly impactful to someone's salaries. So it's like, okay, you want to say, oh, this is a great pay increase, sure, but then what's the impact when it comes to those other? You know. Things that employees have to.
Right, well, and and this is the other thing that, you know, these big increases that we're talking about. No one, I haven't seen anything in the press or anyone talk about this, the impact on the unfunded balance in the retirement plan. When you go through and you go across-the-board increase in salaries, whether it's, you know. Education or if it's the other state employees, you're looking at, you automatically increase the deficit. The unfunded balance, and that's something that they, I mean, you would probably be looking at a couple of hundred million dollars, you'd have to put. If these increases went in, you'd have to put a couple of hundred million dollars into the unfunded balance, because you're increasing it. Which then just says, oh, in a year or two, we're going to have to come and increase employee and employer shares in into the retirement again. So understand, there's unintended consequences of dramatic increases all at once.
Thanks, yeah, I I mean, it, I I remember the first time when I saw how much it costs to give like a three percent. Increase to teacher pay, right? It's a lot of money, like it is a dramatic amount of money. And so, yeah, I I definitely understand hearing that, I do want to address a false narrative I hear. Very often in the education community, and it's kind of like, um, you know, they will get, you know, a three percent, four percent rate, meager to me, very me. So first I'll say, I support teacher raises, I don't care how little, how much, I will support them, so I support. You know, whatever's on the floor, I will be supportive of, but what I will say is, I do get frustrated when I hear. You know, educators will say. Oh, we got a, we got a three percent raise, but insurance grows two percent, so I'm not getting anything, and I'm like, hold on. You got a three percent raise on your salary, you got a one or two percent raise on your insurance, your insurance is five hundred dollars a month. Or three hundred, that's like, you are getting a significant raise still, like it is not, you know, they take those two percentages and then subtract them and say, oh, okay, well, it's basically nothing. That's not the case, that's not the way the math actually works, it's a simplified way, and I hear it a lot from teachers, so. I do want to, I I don't like that narrative of like, I'm going to poo poo on a raise. And so I just want to always, I try to talk to teachers about that, because I'm like, no, you're still getting a significant raise, like. I know your ins- insurance going up is frustrating, it's frustrating to every profession, anybody in the world, when your insurance goes up, you don't, that's not what you want to spend your money on. But it is not the same, you cannot subtract three percent from two percent, you ended up with a one percent raise, it's not the way it works. You are still getting a a raise, and I will support whatever percentage or increases that legislature believes is fiscally responsible to be able to do. I think it's important, and I do not think that a limit on, you know, first-year teachers is, um. I'm I'm not concerned about that, because we need high-quality first-year teachers, and I think when we have our first-year salaries. To where, you know, teachers along the eastern border can go across, you know, drive an hour into Texas and get paid. Ten thousand dollars more a year, we're losing a lot of high-quality teachers to our neighboring states and and they don't deserve them. They don't deserve our, you know, our teachers, like I want to keep our our teachers, so I do believe raising those floors is always going to be something beneficial, we need to be. Attractive compared to our neighboring states, because I want the best teachers to want to stay here. I want to keep our teachers here in New Mexico, because they can easily, I mean, it's not easy to pick up and move. But when you think about, oh, I could get paid fifteen thousand dollars more if I moved six hours away. I mean, it's also a hard sell to stay, so um, definitely, I think, I I hope our charters in particular. Can be creative in in how they pay teachers and and really be thoughtful in how they're spending their money, how much they're paying towards administration versus their teachers. And really, like, if you're serving higher-risk. Student population, you should be teaching, paying your teachers more, I mean, you just should be paying your teachers more. It, they're doing more work, and I mean, like, we've heard school leaders say, like, it's not, it's not like, um, they say, you know, it's it's more necessary work. You can't not do it, right, so that's what I'll say about teacher salaries.
So I just want to say, yeah, the charter schools, charter schools do pay their teachers a lot more. Theirself, most mostly all of them do, especially the charter schools that um. They have high stake ownership, you know, they have ownership and buy-in to the to what they're doing, and but. I'll tell you, charter school teachers work a lot harder. And than traditional. Public school teachers, um, and that's one of the reasons why the teachers' unions haven't busted into charter schools is because. The teachers work longer hours and, um, you know, a negotiated contract agreement just would not fly within the charter school environment. But I'm not anti-union, I was a union teacher when I was a teacher, but I've seen the salary schedules of mostly all the charter schools and they. They they pay their teachers very well, and my whole master thesis was about the benefits. For teachers and why a lot of them leave traditional public schools to go to charter schools, but um. There's also ways, as Becca was saying, creative ways that administrators can pay. Their teachers for the extra work they do, and that's just a simple scope of work contract, and there's a lot of that as well, you know, you just create. And value, show value to the teachers for the extra work they're doing. Now administrators, on the other hand, I never got paid more for scraping the ice, for shoveling the ice off the ramps of the portables. But I just accepted that, that's something that I'm going to have to do, you know, and that's okay. But yeah, so charter schools do take care of their, most good charter schools, high-quality charter schools, take care of their communities.
And I'm and I'm going to say from my district, um. The charters in my district struggle extraordinarily to stay competitive with LCPS. It's really very difficult because, number one, most of them are small. And the small school size adjustment's going away.
Right.
So they're eating so much out of their budget for lease re leased that, um, and. Not only do we have LCPS and LCPS has different, has. More funding streams for. Their monies, they do, so it's it's easier for them to to pay more. We also have Texas that is very easy for teachers to. You know, Kenny Tio's only, what, twenty-five minutes away, so you don't have to go far to get into Texas, so Texas pays more. So it it really is, it is a struggle in my area to keep teachers. But for the charters, um, they really struggle to to fund, some of them have had to actually. I think it was two years ago, we had a school that came to us and said, we have to reduce the number of days in our calendar. So I can increase sal increase salaries, because I can't continue to pay for those extra days and stay competitive with LCPS.
Well, you know, and what a lot of schools do too, is they they seek foundational grants. Because and they supplement their operational budget. By getting program grants, because most grantees are not going to grant a facility. Or salary, but they will grant program, which is the curriculum, so there's, there's a lot of grant opportunities out there too, especially for schools. That are serving marginalized students.
So on the salary, um, on this part of legislation priorities, it's probably safe to assume that all. Of us who are present right now agree with a seven percent. Raise and then also having the tiers go fifty, sixty, seventy, it's going to be worked on, it's going to be hashed out. The sausage is not going to be pretty when they actually work on it, but that, is it safe to say that? Okay, so I would ask if other people agree on having a provision to hold education harmless. I mean, I brought that up every year at the NMSBA conference, and I mean, it was always supported by. All of the the public school districts, it never went anywhere, uh, but it was, we supported it because it was kind of the right thing to do. Don't look to public ed when you want to make a cut.
So my question is, is, are we looking at, if something comes up, we would support that? Or is this something that you would like the PEC to work on as an initiative to say, we would like to. To contact someone and say, we want, would you be willing to sponsor legislation that would do this? That's my question.
Yes. I'm not, I mean, I would want us to all support the idea of the PEC says, yeah, we would like this this to be part of our legislative agenda. So if there's somebody out there, you know, on on the House and Senate side. That would present this, that would be swell, and I probably know, I probably know at least a couple of people on the House side, Senate, maybe not as much. But, um, and especially if there was someone from the north and someone from the south, you know, divided up, but it really is. I mean, I can, I I can promise that if we don't hold education harmless, when the next tidal wave hits. They're going to look to public ed to where they want to make their cuts.
Well, and how many, well, and you never make up what you lost.
No.
It's always a falsehood, but look at when they wiped out. So.
So I think the one thing I'll say is, I don't really want to, I don't want to do anything about that right now, because I believe we're in a surplus. I don't think it's a real issue to like, cut schools right now, like they're putting more money into schools right now and more and more right now. Um, but I would say, so as an educator, I hear what you're saying, as a state employee, they do cut everywhere. I mean, they cut every budget when they cut, they take from everybody, and while it's, it looks like a large amount from public ed, it's because. You know, fifty-plus percent of the dollars come from, are are in public ed, so, I mean, I don't want to see less. I don't want to see less roads being fixed and less, like, I mean, there's, there's more to state government than just education. So by saying, you can't cut any education, there's a lot of things that then would have to go. And if they're ever, like, when we get to a time, probably when we get to a time where there's budget cuts again, so. I definitely, I I mean, I can't, I don't, I think reasonably, my rational fiscal side of me, just, that doesn't really. That can't make sense to to never be able to cut from education if that's something that, like, if the state's in a deficit. And cannot fund, it's gonna, like, I mean, fiscally, it's just, that has to happen at some points too.
So I I would like to say also that I I would love. To be able to hold education harmless, public education for all public education, not just charter schools, but I think that, um. It's a fantasy, I mean, realistically, it's not going to happen, but what I would, but I would like to have more language behind that. So that maybe there's some other protections that can come to hold education harmless. But I'm also thinking ahead to that, pretty soon, we're going to have. Um, recreational marijuana sales that's going to help bring money, hopefully funneling it towards education. That's what I'm hoping.
Well, the the, you know, to.
Would I say fantasy?
Just add on with what Becca said.
We're talking fantasy.
Yeah, my my, my last year at workforce, they were getting about eight thou, or eight million dollars a year in state funds and, you know, seventy, seventy million dollars in federal funds. And the state funds were cut by over a million dollars, so in the terms of the state funds. It was about a twelve or fourteen percent decrease that they took, that that agency took, and that's workforce, which, a couple of years later, guess what? They're scrambling, trying to find people in positions and things like that, so, you know, again, there's these unintended consequences. That the, and thi- this is what will probably happen, they'll put in these rules, and then they'll increase the SEG. And then school districts are going to be required, and they see their utility costs going up. I mean, my natural gas costs last month were fifty percent higher than they were the month before. Or the last year, not the month before, but last year, fifty percent higher. They went up, well, not fifty percent, they went up thirty-three, thirty-three percent. My natural gas cost went up thirty-three percent.
My natural gas cost went up 33% and that was a low-use month. December, January, February, those are high-use months. You're gonna see doubling or tripling your, your gas bill. And that's basically paying for the cost of natural gas. This is another thing, and I'll say this very quickly. When we go and, and we're closing down power plants in this state to go with solar and things like that, and PNM is buying it from other producers. When you hit a peak, they're gonna be paying dollars per kilowatt. I remember in, uh, 2003, no, excuse me, in 1993, 94, electric rates, wholesale power went up to 80 cents a kilowatt hour on the wholesale market. That was in the 90s, 80 cents a kilowatt hour. We're paying about 10 or 11 cents now. Wholesale rates went up 80 or nine, 80, about eight to 80 cents in the Midwest because of flooding. And PNM has a pass-through on purchased power, fuel and purchased power. So if those rates, if they have to go out and buy power at, you know, a dollar, a dollar fifty a kilowatt, that passes right through to your electric bills. And schools and everything are gonna see their electric bills skyrocket because next year, Four Corners isn't gonna be around as part of the base in PNM. And other utilities are cutting that. And what California did is they set up all these independent power producers. And the utilities, okay, they aren't getting big rate increases, but they have independent power producers that are making tons of money. So, you know, you have an increase here and, you know, let's just say they give all the schools, you know, 6 or 7% more in SEG. That's gonna be eaten up a lot through utilities, insurance, other costs. And my, my fear is, is, you know, the promise of these huge raises for teachers isn't gonna materialize and they're gonna be disappointed. They're gonna be even more, uh, demoralized because they're seeing this promise of these huge increases. And when the reality comes into place, when the school districts have to actually start allocating the money, they're gonna be really hamstrung to be able to do that. So. Yeah, I'll drop my whole harmless thing. I mean, I still believe in it. I think that, uh, Becca, you're completely wrong. We could discuss that at another time over cocktails. But, um, no, it's just, um, I just, I've lived here long enough to kind of see the writing on the walls. And agreeing also with David, it's like when things don't materialize, we build everybody up and then they just, and then we just sock them in the stomach, you know, and then we take something away just for good measure. So I would move on, on to legislators' priorities. I know that I mentioned this over the last couple of months. There are an increase for, uh, for charters, um, and this would be state charters. So they can cover more of their administrative. Because so much of, you know, there's all that, uh, money and time because their school director is also a superintendent. So to give them, you know, whatever that was a percentage of, I mean, that's for the others, that's for the attorneys to work out. But just conceptually, giving them a little more money to handle all the extra administrative work they do. And I know there was the other idea that I'd had about, uh, providing, um, state dollars for the implementation year for new schools. And, um, so they're also not scrambling. So we're setting them up for success. And then, uh, in the arguments of all of this, um, I think, uh, Patty, when you're, um, standing before one committee or another, um, and it's too bad that we have to do this, but we always have to remind them, "These are public schools. These are public school kids. Charters aren't privates." And, um, you know, just constantly having to make that argument to them that they're not giving us anything extra. They're just giving us what they're giving everybody else.
Yeah, and you know, I have to say, I was very pleased through these renewal hearings because I think it's the first round of renewal hearings that we didn't have some public comment about, "My child went to the public school." And then, you know, we decided to try a charter. And sometimes even it's the staff that'll say, "I used to teach in a public school." It's like, oh my goodness, you know, and it's really, that was, um, I thought about that during one of them. I said, "This is so, this is honestly the first year that this is, this has not been a comment."
Well, and, and, you know, I'll add on because this, this is important for charter schools, you know, in terms of, of their things. This came up with, with MAS and I mentioned it about a couple of others. They're paying over $200,000 a year between their two campuses out of their SEG to pay for their lease. They're getting a $762 per MIM. And APS, they're one of the highest in the district. They spend $7,000 a year on debt service and capital spending per year, per student, 7,000. Also, the PSCOC approved over 90% of the cost of a new school in Des Moines for 96 students, which when you pro-rate that out over 30 or 40 years, it's over $10,000 a year, a year per student that the state's paying, that the state's paying. Yet, they're giving a charter school $700 and they think they're doing them a favor. Now, PSCOC statutorily is not required to give anything to charter schools. I have been pressing and I think we need to press for legislative changes because it goes to the Gallup lawsuit on capital. And we've had some discussions at PSCOC on that. Because there has to be a better equity distribution of capital dollars to charter schools as well as at-risk schools and things like that.
Right. So before the director starts, I have a question for her that she can hopefully include in what she's gonna say. So, um, Steve, um, mentioned state funding for the implementation year checklist. So my question was, because I know we're pretty close to the end of this current CSP grant, correct? And going forward, would there still, you know, are we anticipating that that's going to be extended so that that support will, will be there? So that's why. So thanks.
Um, so Chair Gibson, um, commissioners, the answer is that, um, that we are asking for and have received an extension of the CSP funds so that we, um, when is the last year that we can do that? What, we'll ask the CSP budget manager, grant manager?
So the program manager has verbally approved to me a, a no-cost extension to September 30th, 2023. That's one year from the end of the grant, which would be 2022. I've submitted the official paperwork. She said, "No problem, we're approving it, but we don't have the new grant award notification yet, but we, they have plenty of time to send it." We are allowed to ask for a subsequent, we can ask for up to four no-cost extensions. The problem with doing that is that you're doing it one year at a time. And when you award new CSP grants, you can only do it, you know, based on one more year of funding and then you'd have to increase it and amend their awards. And we know what amending awards is like. So they didn't have a CSP competition this year, earlier this year. And so I sort of panicked because, you know, rumors are that. Sometime, but yeah, they, they didn't have one. I'm told that they are going to go back to having them next year and the year after. And so we would need to look at, should we apply for a new CSP and revert funds from this one so we can start fresh with a five-year grant? Or should we keep getting no-cost extensions to spend it all and then apply for a new one? Some federal grants allow you to finish out your no-cost extension year while you're running a new grant. I, when I managed the state personnel development grant, we had two grants, SPIDIGS running at the same time, so.
So, okay. So at, at the very least, there's, there's the additional year so that any new applicant for this year has the ability to, to apply for that.
Right. We, we have had, um, challenges getting money out the door, but we have some strategies we've identified for any new applicant to, to be able to receive the funds sooner, we hope, this next year. But what I wanted to comment on was what Commissioner Carrillo was talking about in terms of state money. And just wanted to point out that in statute, 228B14, talks about charter school stimulus funds. There's a placeholder in law that says money could be put into this place that is given to charter schools, um, that are, um, starting up or, um, yeah, initial startup. And so when I first came to work at the PED, there was some funds and there's been no political will to put additional funds in here. But if I were lobbying for something, it would be to have language that says, Charter 2% doesn't revert, but goes into the stimulus account.
Yeah, yeah, the startup fund.
So let me, so let me ask you, because I just need a little clarification. That charter school stimulus funds only targets a new applicant. It would not be able to fund monies going to admin, you know, like, uh, a stipend for administrators of existing schools.
So the way that it reads, and again, it's 228B14A, says that the charter school stimulus fund is created in state treasury. Okay, so there's a placeholder. Uh, money is appropriated to the department to provide financial support to charter schools. And this is old, remember, whether startup or conversion, I don't think that there's any more conversions. For startup costs and initial costs associated with renovating or remodeling existing buildings and structures. Yeah, and expenditures, um, you know, and then it says, "The fund shall consist of money appropriated by the legislature and grants, gifts, divises and, um, donations from any public or private source." "The Department of, um, the Public Education Department shall administer the fund in accordance with rules adopted by the State Board." Um, I guess that would be you. Um, and "That may use up to 3% of the fund for administrative costs." And it would not revert.
You know what? I think that initial, what you said about the 2% reverting to this and not, and not back. The schools are gonna want their money back. I mean, they've put, they're, the, the schools have put their 2% out. They could certainly use those non-expended funds back to them. The schools will have a hard time letting their money go to somebody else, whether it goes to the general fund or to a new startup. I think it would be great to have startup funds for new schools or for their implementation year, their first year, whatever. But it should come from the general fund. It should come from the general fund.
I mean, I'm all, yeah, I mean, I'm all for somehow trying to, if we could, fund monies into that stimulus, not necessarily, not from the 2%, but saying, "Okay, let's get a, a fund in there because that already exists for, even for built, you know, set up a fund so that schools could have access for, you know, building or something like that."
Initially, it was a good idea, but I, I, the schools need their money back.
Yeah.
No, I would agree with Glenn on that. Somehow legislatively to make that change, that money doesn't revert to the general, it goes back, you know, uh, prorata to the schools based on all, you know, that stuff. A bigger question is, no matter how much we discuss here and no matter what our legislative agenda is, do we, do we have a lobbyist?
We're not allowed to have a lobbyist as a, as a commission. We're not allowed to. Yeah.
But it's, the local school boards are.
Correct.
Okay, so absent, uh, this, I mean, one doesn't have to use the L-word. Absent a lobbyist, we could have perhaps a very skilled attorney who has very well-connected, um, to make arguments for us. Doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, I know you're shaking your head this way, but we've, who advocates for us in the roundhouse?
We do.
We, we advocate, agencies advocate for themselves.
We do.
You cannot, you cannot hire an outside person to do that. That, they're prohibited, state agencies are prohibited from doing that.
And I'll be honest, I would have pause to spend charters 2%. I mean, charters hire lobbyists. They do, you know, depending on how much money they have. And sometimes they pull their.
They lobby themselves.
Yeah, but they're up, but they're up there. Um, but they do, sometimes they pool their monies and they'll have a lobbyist on, on a specific issue that they'll pay. But we have to be our own advocates on this. That's why we have these discussions so that we know what the commission as a whole is supporting. And you can say, "Well, I know the commission has, you know, has this consensus." Otherwise, certainly everyone has the right to go speak as an individual, you know. But, um, you know, we.
Oh, man, it's hard because we're volunteers. So in all of our free time, especially those that don't live up here, everyone can just come up during the session. I mean, it's just difficult to be a part of government here in Santa Fe. I'm, I'm, you know, I live eight minutes away. It's not a problem. They can change a committee hearing time and I can still show up. But it's, um, they should, they just make it so darn challenging.
I have been on the road at 3:00 in the morning because I made a change. And it's like, I gotta get up there because I got a text message that, you know, this has changed. So, yeah, I mean, that is unfortunately the reality.
Then you get here, and, oh, by the way, we've moved that until 2:00.
Yeah, or I get all the way up here and they've taken it off. And it's like, oh.
Yeah, the, the, the thing is, uh, Commissioner Carrillo, any individual who is being paid to advocate for an agency or any, anything like that, they have to lo, uh, register as a lobbyist unless they are an employee of that. And state agencies, you know, can't have lobby, lobbyists. School districts are, are treated differently, but, you know, generally, they have, in larger school districts are in a better position because every administrator can basically be a lobbyist. But since they're not being paid to be a lobbyist, they can lobby, but they don't have to be, register as a lobbyist. And so there is a little bit of unfairness and everything in that sense. But state agencies cannot hire an attorney or someone to go represent them in the legislature. They represent themselves.
Right. And that is why often, um, I mean, we always have the conversations with groups like Matt Paul's because quite often, our interests are very similar so that we can be as supportive as we can for that legislation. I mean, there are times, you know, as example, I mean, they spoke very, very strongly several sessions ago about their support for virtual schools. We had a different, as a commission, and the concept that was being put forward then, the commission said, "No." So, I mean, I spoke against it. And it, there's, there's no problem with that, you know, but and those big issues, 99% of the time, we concur so that, and he, they have a lobbyist.
Right.
So that, you know, we just help to support those efforts there. And, you know, I think one of the best examples is when you're looking at the monies for capital improvements and lease reimbursement. That's where we are very supportive of. And there's more teeth with the lobbying by the professional that way, but it's not ours. So, um, I think we're, because we've talked about this before, I think any efforts that are put forward to put monies into building opportunities to get facilities, opportunities for schools to get some relief from the, uh, for lease reimbursement, um, we are, we support. Yeah, you know, and, and take that out. Okay. Sure.
All right. So one of the things that, um, was devastating before I was a PEC commissioner, but then based off of renewals has come up, um, times, uh, several times, is, um, the age cap that was put on, um, public education. And I think as a commission, we have state charters that do, are not able to serve students that they previously had been able to really impact. And so I think we, I feel like we can take a really strong stance on, um, that particular notion. I did notice that, um, the, uh, public charter schools in New Mexico, they do have that as part of their, um, their policies that they're advocating for. There's a specifically, just so that if, I think, for me, it's like a little baby step because I'm like, I still, there shouldn't be an age cap. Like, I, that's what I think personally. But, um, public charter schools of New Mexico put out, um, a policy recommendation that if, as long as a student enrolls by the time they're 21, they should be able to continue receiving funding throughout their graduation. And right now, um, if, as soon as a student turns 21, or maybe it's 22, 22. um, if, as soon as a student turns 21, or maybe it's 22, 22, 22. The, the school no longer receives S E G money for that student if they continue. So if they come in at 21 and they're a freshman, the school either has to allow them to no longer attend after they turn 22, or pay for their education from the rest of the students' monies that are coming in. And it's wrong. I mean, it's just so wrong in so many ways. Like, I, I, it's hard for me, like when, when we were down in Las Cruces and hearing about the school down there that definitely served students who, um, were much older than 22. And I love the story they talked about with the foster mom that she was encouraging her, her son to go to this high school. And he was like, why should I if you didn't graduate high school? So she was like, okay. All right. And so she went to that high school as well and got her, her diploma, you know, to show, and I'm like, you, you can't tell me that that does not benefit New Mexico, that that mother went and got her high school diploma. And not everyone wants to get a GED, just because you're 22, like now the only option you have is to get a GED. And people don't want, like GD programs are not the same as even a charter education or a, a traditional high school. I mean, it just isn't the same kind of programming. And people, that, that doesn't sound appealing to some people. They want a high school diploma and our charters provide that space and it's wrong that they took it away from them.
Steve.
I, I like Matt's idea that if you enroll at 21, I agree with you. It still has its limits, but as long as you enroll by the end of your 21st year, that would, they'll, schools will continue to pay. On the, you had, the last thing that, oh man, the last, my little brain, what was the very last thing you said? You don't even remember.
That it was wrong.
No, no. There was a point you made that.
No, that it benefits, it, it benefits our, it benefits New Mexico. GEDs, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you. As a, as an employer, as a former person who hired tons of people, employers will never regard a GED as they do a diploma, ever. And, and people forget, and none of us were, none of us were in World War II, is that the GED was there for our service member, our servicemen and women because often they left high school to serve their country and we had to have a means for them to come back. Uh, and they may have been older than the high school permitted. And that's why the GED was there. It wasn't there so people could just drop out of high school and decide, you know, I'll get this and it'll, it counts the same. So I, I like the idea of our supporting Matt's group's proposal.
Yeah, my only, I, I think I'm, I align more with Becca's thought. You know, simply because I will reflect on New America in particular, because they had, they have a gentleman serving on their governance council now who was working and supporting his family. But unfortunately, the business closed and he was 30 something. And he was really lost. It's like, now what am I gonna do? And he was literally driving down Highway 70, saw the billboard for New America and went and enrolled. And he is now graduating in the social work counseling program. And had, and after he graduated from high school and junior college, he came back and he serves on their board. So I have pause with saying, oh no, you have to know by 21 that you need, I, I think for so many people, it just takes longer to figure that out. I also, you know, I digress a little bit with, I don't know whether it's necessary for public education to fund an 80-year-old person. Well, I, you know, I, I know, it, it comes out saying like, oh, you know, but I do. I think if, if someone who's like 80 wants their high school diploma, I think at that point in time, I'm more comfortable saying, go get your GED.
Every public college gets state funding regardless of age. Every state college gets public funding regardless of age, based upon the number of students that they have enrolled.
Yeah.
Why are colleges treated differently than our primary and secondary schools?
Yeah, and you know, I, I said it when we were down there. It was the most devastating day in the, at, at the legislature. The day after they, they took that vote, because everyone was like, oh my gosh, why did we do that? Well, it's too late now to, to have that regret when all of those heart-tugging stories were told to you. And then literally they believed and they concurred when one legislator got up and said, it's my understanding that a 60-year-old man can be sitting next to a seven-year-old in the school. And they were told, yes, that's the way it happens. Honest, they almost took me out of the gallery because I gasped and I yelled because I was so appalled. And that's what they voted on. That they put that into mind and I, it was, it was heinous. It really was. So I support Matt's piece, but I would like, I would, I, I'd really prefer.
Or 80 is yours.
79. You know, I, you know, I think it has to be a little bit of baby steps, but I think 35 is at least, uh, you know, by the time you're 35, hopefully you're there, you know, but yeah, that whole idea that you have to know, because we all know it takes longer for some people's brains to, to get there. And life, so many things in life happen that we can't.
Brains are circumstances, for sure. Brains are circumstances.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
Okay, my next one that I was wondering, and maybe this is, I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know, Karina, I would highly doubt that this is already on the PED's radar, but maybe, because we did talk about it. But, um, you know, in our MOU, we did talk about how it's not appropriate for the PEC to be doing the CTE part. That's right now in statute. So talk it, working with the PED to hopefully get some collaboration to where we can find someone to move that over to the CTE folks at the PED so that it isn't in statute anymore. I find very important.
Was it, and just correct me, because it's been a while since I read that rule and we commented on the rule. Was that part of the rule?
It's, it's definitely part of the MOU.
I know, but no, I thought they fixed it in the rule.
It's in statute though. It's, it's in statute. And that's what I'm talking about is in the, that we need to get that in statute changed to where it's, it does not say that it's the PEC, that it says it's the PED and.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, as we talk about fees, certainly things that relate to funding will be part of the call, but we don't know what the call is going to be. So because it's a 30-day session, it's limited to just those items that fall into the call. You know, so.
I, and that's why, the, the reason, the reason I brought it up is because I was thinking it could, I mean, it's authorizing the funding, right? So I was like, well, it is a money thing, you know, really. Um, and so it would be great to have that aligned with what the practice is.
And you can be sometimes creative as to how things align.
Why it's a financial, yes.
Yeah, gotcha. Thanks. Okay. Does anyone?
One last legislative thing.
Sure.
I propose salaries for people working on commissions and boards throughout the state. No, it's never gonna happen. Um, we can move on.
I was telling people last night, I have, I, the most difficult thing I have is when I'm have to go out and advocate for something that's personally going to benefit me, you know, but I, well, and actually there are, my county commission has a salary. Yeah.
I actually give up one.
Sure.
It's mostly a clarification. So we talked about 2%. We know there's something that needs to be different about reversion. And I heard the director's idea that could happen, that we were like, no, that's not where we're, where we want to revert back to schools. Or I've also heard the idea brought up before of it just being non-reverting, that it stays and it does not revert. Um, ideally, I mean, I, I think a big goal of the Finance Committee working with Karina is that there's no money to revert or, you know, like it's, it's, the, the, the level of reversion has been significant. The, I, the hope is that it's nothing, zero, right? But if it's anything, $40,000, you know, whatever, that where does, can we, can, do you think it would be easier to make it to where it's non-reverting? And get that change in statute or to where, I mean, I don't know the process of what that would look like to figure out how to split it up between the charters and then grant it back to the charters.
So it's my understanding, and the director can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that it's not in statute that that money's reverting. My understanding is it's a PED's. But PEDs, no, no, they've just decided to put it in a reverting fund.
Is it a PED policy?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think it's the PED that's deciding that.
I don't think statute.
And statute doesn't either. I think that it's at either the DFA level or, what, what are you saying?
I said, maybe it was a person.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, it's one of the, I think it's in the, um, one of the other agencies that controls budget, but and I know that's not specific. Nonetheless, I think that if there's language that currently exists in other parts of statute, such as the stimulus fund that says that this is non-reverting, that could be added to that part.
Okay, so that's what we would have to look at, because.
I would, I would really, you know, DFA and the state treasurer may be involved in, in some of that, but, but S E G funds are, are by statute, non-reverting. S E G funds are non-reverting. Now, if you put them in and you co-mingle them with other funds, if P, if that's what PED is doing, that's their choice. They don't have to do that because I've, I've advised before. You can separate those funds out. Every PED has to know the amount that they've withheld from every single school. That's, that's easy. It's very easy to go in and say, what percentage of the total S E G that we've withheld is each school putting in? So if this school put in 2%, this school put in one and a half percent, this school put in, you know, two tenths of 1% at the end, you know, at the end of some period of time. And it doesn't have to be in June because you know what their budget is and what you're spending. And I would say anything in excess of, say, $50,000 gets reverted back to the school. Because that $50,000 should be able to cover you with anything unexpected in the month of June. And you should be able to revert all that back to the school. So it's in their budget before July 1st, back into their, not budget, but back into their bank.
And then they wouldn't have to revert that? They wouldn't have to, or sorry, they wouldn't have to spend that in June?
No.
Because they would like.
S E G is non-reverting. If you remember several years ago, when, when, when the state had the financial problems, they went in and they took surpluses from schools and they pulled it out. The school that we just approved, uh, I forget which one it was, yesterday we had, they had, last year they had a slight deficit in terms of their budget to, to the S E G. But the year before, they had a $250,000 surplus. That money doesn't revert unless there is a bill, a bill that's put forward, pulling it back.
So do, do we need, Julia, do we need your advice on, does, does, do we need in order to do anything to process the, to make a process for it, does it need to go through the, like, does it need to go through the legislature? Who do we need to talk to about this?
If we want to revise statute, which I think that makes it permanent, talk about establishing a, a process that continues past all our tenure, right? Then have some language in the statute that says that the 2% is non-reverting. And, and for that matter, revise the Charter Stimulus Fund portion of statute that, so that it isn't just for startup. So that you could use the money, or this division in collaboration with PEC could use the money to provide technical support for schools as well as get creative in other ways that we would spend the money.
Yeah, I'm more on Glenn's train though, that I think if it's a substantial piece of money, that the schools would like it back because that 2% is a big chunk of their money. So I think out of the 2%, if we haven't used it, you know, for, you know, if we haven't used it wisely during the year,
Yeah.
then I, you know, why, and we, when we talked about this when we did the MOU, you know, try, and we, and we had this conversation. It should go back to the schools. And, and it's nice to say, oh, we could put it into this for the schools to do that, but especially a little school, you know, for them to say, hey, you know what, I could use that $10,000 or, or whatever. Um, that I, I think that.
Well, even like MAS, I calculated out for MAS, M A S. They would have gotten back $80,000. That's their share of that 900,000 that reverted.
Well, now take 1,900 students that are coming in from Pecos.
Right.
And take 2% of that, because I know we've joked about some of that money, you know, and say, oh, we just took 1,900 kids. So how much does that, you know? So, but, I mean, the reality is, uh, it is their money.
Yeah.
And that 2%, let alone 7% that the one school was, that Vista Grande was, was losing. But I think, I think there's a short term and a long term.
Yeah. So is there, is it like kind of twofold? So one, we need to say non-reverting. Number two, we need to add, you know, anything in excess of $50,000 is returned to the school.
Well, okay, so I'm gonna make it threefold.
Yeah.
Because I think the short term for me, because I'm concerned that, because it is a 30-day that, you know, even though it, it fits in, it, it may not get there. So I think that on the short term, I think we, I think you can have the, a, a conversation with the MOU and say, it's non-reverting.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Cause that's, that's not necessarily through the, that's, that's a process we can work on with the PED.
And it, I think it would have to be that commitment to obligate it, that it's that 2% money is S E G money. It's not going to be co-mingled. That's a short term. I'm not saying that's the perfect fix, but it's a short-term fix. And then hopefully you, there's legislation that comes this time around. But if it doesn't, we've, we're moving on that short term and then 60-day session comes and we have a better chance of, you know, getting it done. But I think, um, because I think, you know, and, and this is where we, it becomes frustrating at times because you have, and this is nothing against the new cabinet secretary, but you have a new cabinet secretary that A, wasn't part of that MOU process. So I think it's fair to engage in a conversation simply because of that. But I think you also have a cabinet secretary who I believe on maybe two calls ago, even, or at Matt's conference, expressed that, you know, he's not real, you know, the 2% isn't something that he dealt with when he was here the last time. So it's kind of new to him talking about it. So, you know, let's have that conversation and talk about it so that we're working together. Because ultimately, it's this, we have a statutory and a contractual obligation to the schools, we've said this all along, to identify where that 2% money is going. And that's the, that's the purpose of this. So let's try to do it in a, you know, a fashion that doesn't set us at odds with anyone. And that's, you know, that's the goal.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, that's, that's, you know.
That's not the intent. And I think, you know, there are legislators that are attorneys that do represent some charter schools that we could maybe ask one or two of them if they would be willing to sponsor such a bill. But the need to do that is urgent because you can't wait until, you know, when the session starts to say, hey, can you, we need to get them to, you know, basically draft up something, give it to them, then say, would you be willing to sponsor this? And, you know, put some effort behind it.
I'll be honest with you, without, I, I have not seen anything. But I think there's draft out there.
Okay.
You know, so I don't think it's, because it's, you know, um, so I don't, I, because I know when I've just been, you know, talking with folks, it's like, and some of them are charter attorneys. They said, so how are you on that 2% thing? And, you know, it became a topic of discussion when I was at the reception for the public charter schools down in Cruces. It was, it was brought up to me, you know, so it's like, I think it's, Steve.
Uh, I was gonna ask if when it's time to do the agenda, if we can take 10 before we start on the agenda. Uh, I was gonna ask if, when it's time to do the agenda, if we can take ten before we start it on the agenda.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, but I think, are we now done with legislative priorities? You don't have a one more thing?
No, Colombo thing, no.
And I thank you for that, because, yeah.
Yeah. I just want to clarify that, what that looks like, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was off, so. Let's take a ten-minute break before we start, because, and actually. We have to bring Cindy in, and. We're stopping one recording, starting another recording, whatever, thank you.